Please rise for a minute of silence, of prayer and meditation. Please remain standing for singing of our national anthem. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move with the authority calling of the roll. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
No objections, no objections, motion is approved. The Speaker of the House of Representatives, Alan Peter Caetano. Suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader. To the members of the House of Representatives of the 18th Congress, our Speaker, Alan Peter Caetano, will address us on a very important matter. Speaker.
For I know the plans I have for you, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope in a future. Yung po ang nasa Jeremiah 29/11, and Jeremiah is considered a prophet by Jews, our brother Muslims, and by Christians. And during this opening of our session, dito po sa 2020, it is a very symbolic year. 2020 is the symbol for perfect vision. It is quite a challenge for all of us members of Congress as we begin our legislative session. We begin with a lot of faith and hope, but of course with also a lot of sadness and concern for our kababayan in the Calabarzon area. People are holding us to our commitment that the 18th Congress will be reliable, will be relevant, and will be responsive to the needs of our people. It is also very challenging because we only have eight weeks. And if you are given one or two minutes each to speak today, some of you will speak about the farmers, the fisher folk, the OFWs, the PWD, our different ethnic groups around the country na meron pang discrimination o may problema sa kanlang ancestral lands. We will talk about our territorial integrity, our sovereignty. We may talk about the problems of our vendors and small, medium, and micro enterprises. We can talk about the problems of our transport sector. So we will have to find a way, just as we did during the budget deliberations, to work faster, work harder, but also to work smarter. And in this regard, we will be giving full support to all of our committees and committee chairpersons so that we will be able to do more in these next eight weeks. We have partnered with the Duterte administration to give people a safe and comfortable life. Yung po ang sinabi ng ating pangulo, "safe and comfortable life", isang komportable't ligtas na buhay para sa lahat ng Pilipino. This is quite a challenge now for people in Laguna, in Cavite. I heard Quezon has already started accepting evacuees, if I'm not mistaken, 8,000 already. And especially, of course, the hardest hit which is Batangas. Well, let me start out by thanking the first responders from the municipal, to the city, to the province disaster response units, to the NDR RMC, to all the volunteers, to the PMP, BFP, DSWD, DOST, to all of our members of Congress, not only of Calabarzon, but those of you like our Majority Leader who immediately convened and tried to solicit some assistance and support. Salamat po. Sa ating mahal na pangulo, na sa akin paniniwala ay nandun ulit po sa Batangas mamiehang hapon and has been there to see the situation in the ground, thank you for your immediate help. Sa lahat ng ating kababayan na nagdadasal, nagsumoporta, nagbibigay, this is a challenge for Congress to not only deal with ita al volcano eruption, but to come up with long-lasting, reliable solutions, programs, mechanisms to address disaster and calamity. Sino po sa inyo, ng miembro ng kongreso dito, ang hindi nakatikim ng one form of disaster or calamity sa inyong distrito? Over the years, sa disaster mitigation, grabe na po ang awareness, but we have to do our part. I would prefer that before we end our sessions in March, Congress will already have gone paperless and that we will have a zero-waste system even preliminarily in order. We have to lead by example. Over the years, yung response system po ng gobyerno, in the last three administrations, I believe, have stepped up. Kun titignan niyo po ang relief effort, yes, marami pa rin kulang, but for those of you who have been in Congress for the last decade or so, you still remember, ilan po sa ating mga kababayan dito, let's say, sa mga kapampangan, no? Sa Pinatubo, di ba? Napakalayo na po ng quality at saka speed nung pag-responde natin. But, a big "but" is that medyo nagkukulang pa rin tayo pagdating sa rehabilitation. Sa rehabilitation po, plano at execution medyo mahina po. Bakit po? Because we face, what, 15 to 20 strong typhoons a year? Maybe one or two super typhoons. We have earthquakes, we have volcanic eruptions, and that is beside yung flooding at saka fire and everything else, no? And I see a lot of you nodding. Congressman Volte, siyempre, you see, you're no stranger to this kind of... Let us not wait for the people who were affected by Yolanda, by Marawi, by Ursula, by the earthquakes in Mindanao, and by Sendong and Pablo, and even those affected by Pinatubo, no? Let's not wait for them to remind us again that, yes, let's take care of Calabarzon, pero dun sa mga lugar nila, hindi pa tapos ang rehabilitation. Sa Pinatubo po, may mga areas pa rin na hindi pa rin nakabalik sa sariling town ang mga tinamaan po ng lahar. So now that the government is fully focused on relief efforts, on evacuating mga kababayan in danger zone, I think Congress can be a partner. Hindi po tayo makipagpaligsahan, hindi po tayo gagawa ng separate plan. We will be, have parallel efforts. And I thank Secretary Lorenzana and Secretary Anjo, who was supposed to be here at 5:00 PM today to meet the Calabarzon Congressmen and Women, but then the President is going to Batangas, so he will be with them. But they immediately said, "We will not only send a Usec, but we will come ourselves" because we want to work out the details with you. So this afternoon, we had a meeting with 11, 10, 11 congressmen led by our minority and majority leader. Kasama po ang key committees natin sa social services, agriculture, disaster management. And we have tasked Congresswoman Lucy Torres Gomez, who's not also a stranger to handling disasters, no? To consolidate our short, long-term, and medium-term efforts for the people of Batangas, Laguna, and Cavite. We want to come out with a feasible, strategic, and comprehensive rehab plan and assign whether it is one person, one agency, one department, that will be fully accountable. Because, for example, at this point in time, how do we ask DSWD, DILG, DOH? O ano na nangyari sa Ursula? O paano yung sa housing? How do we ask the NHL to say na, "Kamusta na ba yung mga tinamaan ng Lindolsa or Linog sa Davao Region", when they are busy with Calabarzon? So we have to learn from our mistakes in the same manner that we learned from our mistakes when it came to Yolanda and Pinatubo and have stepped up sa rehabilitation. So I'd like to get your support, mga mahal kong miembro ng kongreso, that it is time for us to act, but it is also time for us to listen. So kanina pong lunch, I consulted po the leadership of the House, including the minority leader, and upon motion of the Majority Leader, and if the motion is passed, then we will have to get concurrence of the Senate, the leadership of the House is proposing that we hold our session on Wednesday in the Batangas City Convention Center. One of the biggest evacuation centers is the Sports Coliseum beside the convention center. And aside from the speech of Congresswoman Lucy Torres Gomez, we will, the proposal is that we move to become a committee of the whole and listen to different representatives from all over Laguna, Cavite, Batangas, listen to the first responders, listen to those who are directly affected. So I wish us all well and thank you for the record-breaking attendance, speed, and quality of work that we did in 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, mga mahal kong miembro ng kongresista, we have our work cut out for us, but I have faith that together, you know, we can struggle as one, we can win as one. So thank you and God bless, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the unanimity in spirit and the consensus arrived at, by the leaders of the House at your office, and at your instance, we move to hold the session this Wednesday at the Batangas City Convention Center at 1:00 PM. Details of the transportation of which shall be explained and disseminated tomorrow. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Second motion, Mr. Speaker. I seconded, Mr. Speaker, because in June 15, 1991, we, as Kapampangan, we also experienced this eruption of this Mount Pinatubo eruption. Kaya po, napakahalaga po sa atin na pumunta tayo sa Batangas, dun tayo magsession, dun tayo maghold ng committee as a whole. At takita niyo namang po, the province of Pampanga, siya po ang pinakaunang pumunta sa Batangas, and we know what they feel. So, Mrs. Speaker, kaya po, ko tumayo to second the motion para podun nating gawin yung ating session. Salamat po.
There is a motion. Mr. Speaker, we would like to recognize the minority floor leader.
Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, upon my consultation with the minority block, we concur, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to hold the regular session on Wednesday in Batangas City, in the Batangas City Convention Center. Is there any objection? If there's none, the motion is carried. May the Chair request the Majority Leader to communicate this to the Senate and to get their concurrence in accordance with the constitutional requirements of holding a session in another area aside from where we regularly hold our sessions.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that will be done before the end of the day, Mr. Speaker.
And may I request the Secretary General and Sergeant-at-Arms to make the necessary arrangements. Over the weekend po, may pumunta na po tayo mga staff sa convention center. It is outside the danger zone, and it is an area that will be secured. So with the permission of the body, the Majority Leader will announce tomorrow what time. I think we're looking at around 1:30 instead of 3 o'clock. And transportation will be provided for those who want to go from the Batasan or from the Taguig-Macati area going to Batangas. Majority Leader.
Yes, suspended the session.
Suspended.
Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move, we call the roll.
No objections, no objections, no, motion is approved. The Secretary General is now to hold the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abante, Baya, Adel Yanosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Ako, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Gabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amande Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonis, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Vanyes Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Yason, Biliones, Piron, Bolilla, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Prossas, Bulot, Bustos, Cabatbat, Cabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Cayetano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizalde, Co Wango, Co Liantes, Crisólogo, Coa, Co Resma, Cueva, Culyamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalug, Datol, Daza, Deus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Tuavit, Tuhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleio, Elago, Enverga, Erice, Ergel, Armita Buahing, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrela, Fariñas Ria, Fariñas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Caite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Casataya, Gatchalyan, Gato, Eron, Co Ed, Co Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Carlo, Co Rosetta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Fernandez, Peraradi, Hofer, Halus Jos, Javier, Jiménez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lacson Noel, Lagman, Lagón, Lara, Lazatin, Liatchón, Legarda, Lim, Limcaichong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Catividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Juaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Dison, Paciau Alberto, Paciau Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Ichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmento, Saulub, Savellano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihán, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrilita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shari, Tan Tambut, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves José, Bianco, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ang Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Varga. Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Yolago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate, Zubiri. Speaker's present.
Happy? Welcome, everyone!
My ladies!
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 232 members responded to the call.
With 232 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the President of the Courtroom, the Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we approve Journal Number 32 dated November 7, December 2, 4, 9 to 11, and the 16th to 18th year 2019. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is done. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the titles in bills and the solutions on first reading as well as communications and the committee reports. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is done. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the bills and the solutions on first reading and for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill Number 5856, Establishing a Testa Manpower Development Training Center in Mayao, Pugao, to be known as the Mayayao Testa Training and Assessment Center, Representative Tungalau.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Numbers 5857 to 5860, 5897, 5898, 5900, 5901, 5903 to 5905, and 5909 to 5911, Separating, Establishing National High School Anexes, Extensions in the Provinces of Pugao, Dava Oriental, and Zambuanga City, and converting them into dependent national high school, Representative Tungalau, Dalipian Alomario.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5861, Institutionizing Support Mechanisms and Protection for Public School Teachers on Matters of Student Discipline and Classroom Management, Representative Fortuno.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5862, Declaring Buhi and Batol Lakes in Buhi and Batol Camarinesur as Eco Tourism Zones, Representative Fortuno.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 5863, Providing a Scholarship Grant for Every Filipino Family, Representative Fortuno.
To the Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5864, Strengthening the Implementation of a National Organic Agriculture Program and Amending Certain Sections of RA Number 10068, Representative from Yarisato.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number 5865, Regulating the Registration, Licenseur, and Practice of Physical Therapy, Representative Titor.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 5866, Repportioning Bulakan into Seven Regular Districts, Representative Silberio Si Alvarado, Pancho, Villarica, and Robes.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5867, Expanding the Jurisdiction of the RTC, METC, MTC, and MCTC, Representative Nograles Jerico.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5868, Creating Two Additional Divisions of the Court of Appeals in Davao City, which will handle cases coming from the 11th and 12th Judicial Regions, Representative Nograles Jerico.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5873, Regulating the manufacture, distribution, sale, importation, and use of all electronic nicotine delivery systems and heat sticks in the Philippines, Representative Bagatsing.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5880, Institutionizing the mandatory establishment of a Population Office in all provinces, cities, and municipalities, Representative Baronda.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5883, Creating the Sharilla Judicial District comprising of the Palawan Province and Puerto Princesa, Representative Abuez Saldivar.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5884, Authorizing the Community Environment and Natural Resources Office of the DNR having jurisdiction over the parcel of land subject of the application to use recutting permits to landowners for the cutting, gathering, and utilization of naturally grown trees in private and/or titled land subject to the guidelines of the DNR, Representative Abuez Saldivar.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 5885, Integrating the Palawan State University College of Community Resources Development, External Campuses in Palawan and Puerto Princesa City as regular campuses of the Palawan State University, Representative Abuez Saldivar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5886, Establishing the Paralegal Profession and Codifying the Paralegal Profession Conduct Guidelines, Representative Nograles Juan.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 5893, Providing for the Magna Carta of Parangay Animal Health Workers, Representative Amantimatba.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5894, Declaring July 28th of every year a special non-working holiday in Caban Baran City to be known as Caban Baran City Day, Representative Amantimatba.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5895, Requiring all graduating high school students to plant at least one tree as a prerequisite for graduation, Representative Amantimatba.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5896, Mandating Universal Design Principles, Standards, Specifications, and Policies for the Creation of Barrier-Fee-Built Environments, Transportation, and Tourism Facilities to Enhance the Dignity, Independence, Mobility, Safety, and Convenience of PWD Senior Citizens, Women and Children, and Other Sectors with Special Needs for their Full Inclusion, Participation, and Non-Discrimination, Representative Chato and Arroyo.
To the Special Committee on Person with Disabilities and the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill Number 5899, Regulating the Importation, Manufacturing, Distribution, and Sale of Children's Products Containing Hazardous Chemicals, Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 5902, Imposing Stiffer Penalties for Child Abuse, Exploitation, and Discrimination, Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 5906, Amending Provisions of RA Number 10667, Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill Number 5907, Extending the National Feeding Program to Undernourish Children in Secondary Schools, Amending RA Number 11037, Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5908, Creating the Social Housing Development and Finance Corporation, Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill Number 5913, Providing for the Basic Regulatory Framework for Virtual Banking, Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill Number 5914, Creating Two Additional Branches of the RTC and One Additional Branch of the MTC to be Stationed in Kabuyao City Laguna, Representative Mariano Hernandez.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5915, Standardizing the Appropriate Class Size in Public Schools Nationwide, Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5916, Establishing a 500 Bed Capacity Hospital for Teachers and Their Dependents, Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5917, Mandating the Standardization of Classes and Facilities in Public Schools, Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5918, Separating San Pablo City for the Third Legislative District of Laguna to constitute the lone legislative district of the City of San Pablo, Representative Aragones.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5922, Mandating Higher Educational Institutions and Technical Vocational Institutions to Ensure the Safety and Security of the Academic Committee from Internal and External Threats, thereby creating a Safe, Safety and Security Committee, Representative Kabotchan.
To the Committee on Technical, Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5923, Promoting the Use of Urban Farming in the Country's Metropolitan Areas to Address Food Security, Concerns and Regenerate Ecosystem Functions, Representative Kabotchan.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill Number 5924, Incorporating the Value of Responsible, Fair, and Truthful Usage of Enjoyment of Social Media in Schools and Universities, Representative Kabotchan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Resolutions, House Resolution 628, Commending the Producers, Writers, Directors, Actors and Actresses of the Movie "Keson's Game" for Generating Several Awards or Recognition at the Cinema World Fest Awards and Indie Fest Film Awards, Acculate Global Film Competition Maryland International Film Festival, World Fest Houston International Film and Video Festival, Ramgate International and TV Festival, Near Nazareth Festival, Cinema World Fest Annual Gala, Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Resolution 629, Congratulating and Commending the Young Man from Leveria, Malate, Fifth District of Manila, Carlos Yulo, for Winning Two Gold, Five Silver Medals in the Men's Artistic Gymnastics in the 30th Sea Games, Representative Bagatsing.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 635, Commending and Congratulating Speaker Alan Peter Es Cayetano, Chairman of the Philippine Southeast Asian Games Organizing Committee, the Honorable Abraham N. Tolentino, President of the Philippine Olympic Committee, all the organizers and volunteers, and our Filipino athletes for the Successful and Historic Conduct of the Recently-Concluded 30th South Sea Games, Representative Singson Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 636, Expressing the Sense of the House to Support the Resumption of the Peace Talks between the Government of the Philippines and the National Democratic Front of the Philippines, based on Previous Agreements Between the Two Parties, including the Hague Joint Declaration of 1982 and Stand Down Agreement of 2018, Representative Abante, Abellianosa, Aco, Advincula, Agabas, Aglipay, Albano, Vargas Alfonso, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Aragones, Omentado, Bagatsing, Barba, Baronda, Barzaga, et al.
To the Special Committee on Peace, Conciliation, and Unity.
House Resolution 637, Commending and Congratulating Conchita Mendoza of Calabayo Western Summer on the Celebration of her 100th Year and for Being the Pioneer Tinapa Manufacturer in Calabayo and Helping Make Calabayo Tinapa a Culinary Staple and a Source of Pride for Calabayan, Representative Sarmento.
To the Committee on Visayas Development.
House Resolution 638, Commending Honorable Jocelyn Solis Reyes of Quezon City RTC Branch 211, and Urging the Legal Community and Filipinos to Continue to uphold the Rule of Law, Representative Barzaga.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Resolution 639, Urging the Committee on Legislative Franchises to Report Out Without Further Delay for Plenary Action a Consolidated Version of Eight Pending Bills proposing for the Renewal for Another 25 Years of the Legislative Franchise of ABS-CBN Corporation, Representative Lagman, Tambunting, Pimentel, Biliones, Castro Franz, Sarate, Culyamat, Caite, and Brosas.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Resolution 640, Commending Carlos Yulo for His Successful Steep in the 2019 Southeast Asian Games, bagging Two Gold and Five Silver Medals for the Philippines, Representative Gico.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
Six, House Resolution 641, Directing the House Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs to Investigate the Death of Generalin Pedernal Villa Verde an OFW in Kuwait allegedly at the Hands of Her Kuwait Employers and Conduct an Inquiry into the Dolls and DFA's Implementation of the 2018 Philippine Kuwait Memorandum of Agreement to Safeguard the Life and Limbs of OFWs, Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 642, Directing the Committees on Overseas Workers Affairs, Labor Unemployment, and Foreign Affairs to Conduct an Inquiry on the Contingency Plan for the 1.2 Million OFWs in the Middle East and Implications on the Philippine Economy of the Escalating Iran-U.S.A. Conflict, Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate, Message dated December 17, 2019, Informing the House that On Even Date the Senate Designated Senators Ronald Bato de la Rosa and Achilino Coco Pimentel III as Additional Conference of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1074 and House Bill 1026.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated December 19, 2019, Informing House that On December 18, 2019, the Senate Approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 1074 and House Bill 1026.
To the Committee on Appropriations. To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, Letter dated 13 November 2019 of Juanito Victor Remulio, Governor, Tresemartes City, Habiti, Submitting the Quarterly Financial Report of Operations for the Ending of Third Quarter 2019 on the Local Government Support Fund Conditional Matching Grant to Provinces for Road Repair, Rehabilitation, and Improvement.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 25 November 2019 of Edgardo Masong Song, Administrator, National Electrification Administration, Providing the House with a Copy of their Annual Report for Calendar Year 2018.
Committee on Energy.
Letter dated December 2, 2019 of Delwin Lozarenza, the Secretary of TNT, Submitting the Department's Report on the Implementation of Martial Law in Mindanao, Covering the Month of September 2019.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Letter, Letter dated 4 December 2019 of Maria Catalina Cabral, Says one under Secretary for Planning and Private, Public-Pprivate Partnership Office of the Secretary DPWH, Submitting to the House the Project Briefers as of November 25, 2019, Including the List of Priority Projects of PPP of the DPWH and Toll Regulatory Board for Implementation, Ongoing, and Completed by the DPWH.
To the Committee on Public Works and Higings.
Letter dated 4 December 2019 of Marilo Mendoza, Chairperson, Tariff Commission, Providing at the House a Copy of the Commission's Annual Report for Calendar Year 2018.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Letter dated December 9, 2019 of Maria Gle Dalin, State Auditor Five Supervising Auditor, Audit Groups CGS 1 and 2 Water Districts and Other CGS Standalone Agencies, Regional Office Number 6, Koa, Furnishing the House a Copy of the Annual Report on the Libacau Water District Población Libaco Aklan for the Years Ended December 31, 2016, 2017, and 2018.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 10 December 2019 of Secretary Adeline Sito, Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs and Head, PLLO, Submitting the Details on Appropriations, Obligation, and Disbursement of the PLLO for the Month Ending November 30, 2019, Pursuant to Section 101 of Republic Act Number 11260.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated 10 and 11 December 2019 of Janice G. Isonzales, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, Furnishing the House with duly Certified and Authenticated BSP Issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letters dated 17 and 19 December 2019 of Janice G. Isonzales, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, PSP, Furnishing the House with duly Certified and Authenticated Copies of BSP Circular Letter Number CL 201986, Dated 2 December 2019, and PSP Circular
and PSP circular number 1067 dated 13 December 2019.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Quarterly financial report of operations for the quarter ending September 30, 2019, Province of Ilocos Norte and the local government support fund conditional matching grant to provinces for road repair, rehabilitation, and improvement.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
2018 annual report of the Department of Trade and Industry.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
Balitang Dar, the official newsletter of the Department of Agrarian Reform, special edition.
To the Committee on Agrarian Reform.
Letter dated December 202019 of Salvador C. Medialdea, Executive Secretary, Office of President Malacanyang, transmitting 2 original copies of Republic Act 11464, which was signed by President Rodrigo Rua Duterte.
To the Archives.
Letter dated January 6, 2019 of Salvador C. Medialdea, Executive Secretary, Office of the President Malacanyang, transmitting 2 original copies of Republic Act 11465, which was signed by President Rodrigo Rua Duterte.
To the Archives.
Letter dated January 8, 2020 of Salvador C. Medialdea, Executive Secretary, Office of the President Malacanyang, transmitting 2 original copies of Republic Act 11466, which was signed by President Rodrigo Rua Duterte.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports. Report Numbers 179 to 186 of the Committees on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 5887, 1079, 5888, 5889, 497, and 5890 to 5892.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 187 of the Committee on Revision of Laws on House Bill 5912.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 188 to 191 of the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 59192, 5921, and 5925.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 192 to 195 of the Committee on Local Government on House Bill Numbers 1497, 656, 5944, and 5945.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize... I move that we recognize the lady from the 3rd District of Batangas, the honorable Representative Maria Teresa Coliantes, be recognized on a question of privilege. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The gentle lady, Representative Maria Teresa Maytet Coliantes of 3rd District of Batangas is recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I rise on a matter of collective and personal privilege. Mrs. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, this representation humbly stands before you today to request for much-needed help on behalf of the people of the 3rd District of Batangas. The 3rd District of Batangas is composed of 10 municipalities and 2 cities located around Taal Lake, which includes Taal Volcano Island itself. The 10 municipalities are Balete, Talisay, Laurel, Aguncilio, San Nicolas, Santa Teresita, Alitagtag, Cuenca, Mataasna Kahoy, and Malvar. And the 2 cities are Santo Tomas and Tanawan. Mr. Speaker, at 1:20 PM of January 12, 2020, Taal volcano erupted after remaining relatively quiet for nearly half a century. I am certain everyone here, in one way or another, witnessed the events that transpired after Taal's awakening. Some of us may have even experienced the ill effects brought about by the eruption and the resulting ashfall. However, no one felt the wrath of Taal volcano more than the people of the 3rd District of Batangas as they witnessed firsthand and experienced in full the devastation that came with Taal's eruption. I myself heard the terrifying explosion from the town of Balete coming from the volcano and felt the ground shake on that fateful Sunday. Mr. Speaker, this representation is very grateful that no human lives were lost that day. This is largely because of the quick response of the government, both national and local, to implement a timely and well-coordinated evacuation process. We Batangenyos are very thankful for the outpouring of support and unselfishness displayed by our fellow Filipinos, both in and out of government during this time of tragedy. Let me give special mention and thank the following on behalf of the people of the 3rd District of Batangas. Maraming salamat sa ating mahal na presidente Rodrigo Duterte for being on top of the situation and coordinating evacuation and relief efforts. Maraming salamat sa mga senador at aking kapwak kongresista sa inyong agaran at usang loob na tulong sa aming mga Batangenyo. Maraming salamat sa DPWH for providing the manpower and equipment necessary to immediately make roads affected by the ashfall possible in order that relief goods and aid can reach the evacuees. Maraming salamat sa DSWD for providing relief goods starting Monday up to the present and for posting psychiatrists in evacuation centers to address the mental trauma and stress-related problems. Maraming salamat sa DOH for sending medicine and medical teams to evacuation centers to prevent the outbreak of disease. Maraming salamat sa DEPED for allowing the use of schools as evacuation centers. Maraming salamat sa PNP at AFP for assisting in the evacuation, in the distribution of relief goods, and ensuring that peace and order is maintained during these trying times. Marami ring salamat sa lahat ng aming kapitbahay na LGUs for sharing and making their facilities available to the people who were forced to leave their homes. Maraming salamat sa FEVOCs for tirelessly monitoring the volcanic activity. Maraming salamat sa DA for pledging to rebuild the farm-to-market roads destroyed by the continuous volcanic earthquakes. Maraming salamat sa DTI at DOLE for pledging to implement programs in support of our people. Marami rin pong salamat sa private sector for your generosity in contributing your time and resources to help us in Batangas. This representation is truly amazed at how people from all walks of life, from near and far, both big businesses and personal support, all joined hands to help ease the suffering of my constituents. Mr. Speaker, the response of our countrymen during this calamity truly made me feel proud to be a Filipino. Maraming salamat pong muli sa lahat ng taong nagbigay ng abot kaya nilang tulong. Hindi po makakalimot ang mga Batangenyo sa kanilang utang na loob sa sambayanang Filipino. Mr. Speaker, despite everything that has already been given and done, I am afraid I cannot say it will be enough to sustain us for the long haul. Eight days have passed since the Taal volcano first erupted, and we are still in the midst of this catastrophe and that the battle is still very far from over. I have been going around and speaking to our people who are now scattered over hundreds of evacuation centers or are living with relatives and friends in and outside Batangas. Mr. Speaker, I've heard and I have heard the cries of my people and I cry with them. My constituents tell me, wala na po kaming kabuhayan, wala na po ang aming alagang baka, kalabaw, kambing, manok, baboy, kabayo, isda, at aming mga tanin. They ask me, hanggang kailan gahoo ito? Puputok pa gahoo ang bulkan? May babalikan pa gahoo kaming tahanan? Papaano na gahoo ang magsisimula ulit? Mr. Speaker, I wish I knew the answers to these questions, but only God knows the answers right now. Mr. Speaker, as of January 17, 2020, the estimated damage in agriculture alone in the province of Batangas amounts to over 2 billion pesos, mostly due to the devastation in the 3rd District of Batangas. Over 26,000 families were forced to leave their homes. Five out of the 10 towns in the 3rd District of Batangas, namely Aguncilio, Balete, San Nicolas, Laurel, and Talisay, are now virtually ghost towns as they are in total lockdown. Our district has now infamously earned the nickname "Ground Zero." Mr. Speaker, although we Batangenyos are said to be proud and brave, matapang, hindi sumusuko, at lumalaban hanggang sa huli, I cannot help but think that the obstacles our people face ahead seem insurmountable. I feel that we will not be able to face them alone. In the midst of this seeming hopelessness of our people, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, fellow workers in government, mga kababayan, we need you now more than ever. Kailangan namin ang inyong tulong at suporta hanggang makabangon kami. Mr. Speaker, as you know, the 8 rays of the sun on our beloved flag symbolize and represent the 8 provinces that first rose against the colonial occupation to fight for Philippine independence. One of those provinces is the province of Batangas. Batangas has always been there for the Filipino people. At ngayon naman po, na kami ang nangangailangan. Umaasa po ang bawat isang Batangenyo na kami ay inyuring sasamahan upang makabangon muli ang Batangas. And finally, may we ask all of you to join us in fervent prayer for the safety of our people. With this distinguished body behind the people of the 3rd District of Batangas, I am confident that we will rise up from this tragedy together. Sa inyong mga kamay at puso, inilalag ako ang mga hinahing, mga pangarap, at ang kinabukasan ng aming mga kababayan. Bangon Batangas! Mabuhay ang Filipino, mabuhay ang ating inangbayang Pilipinas. Maraming, maraming, maraming salamat po.
Definitely, Batangas will bounce back. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the honorable Coliantes be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is objection, the chairman. The speech of Representative Coliantes be referred to Committee on Rules.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from the 6th District of Batangas, the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Vilma Santos Recto, be recognized on a question of privilege.
The Deputy Speaker of the 6th District of Batangas is recognized. Deputy Speaker Vilma Santos Recto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, honorable members of the House of Representatives, good afternoon. I rise to bring to the attention of this honorable body the plight of our people in Batangas whose lives took a sudden turn when Taal volcano erupted. It was frightening and shocking when the Philippine Institute of Volcanology and Seismology raised the alert level of Taal volcano to alert level 4. Raising the possibility of an explosive eruption whose timing and scale are a mystery to us all, an alarming and horrifying nature of this volcano. This is aggravating and burdening to our people who are anxious now more than ever about their family and about their future. Mr. Speaker, here is the situation now. The data shows that as of January 19, 2020, 11 PM, according to the Batangas Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, or PDRMO, there are 448 evacuation centers within and outside of Batangas, serving more or less about 41,000 families or about 180,000 individuals, while some families opted to stay with their relatives and leave the evacuation center. According to FEVOCs, those residing within 14-kilometer radius of the volcanic volcano need to be evacuated under alert level 4. These are the towns within the 14-kilometer radius danger zone that are classified as high-risk zones. The municipality of Aguncilio, San Nicolas, Talisay, Balete, Mataasna Kahoy, Lemery, Laurel, Taal, parts of Cuenca, Alitagtag, Santa Teresita, Sanuse, Malvar, Tanawan City, and Lipa City, and also parts of Tagaytay City and Cavite Province. Ang mga kinatawan po ng Batangas sa kongresong ito, mula kay Congresswoman Eileen Ermita Buhain, Congressman Rani Abu, Congresswoman Maytet Coliantes, Congresswoman Llanda Bolilia, at Congressman Marvin Marino, kasama po ang inyong lingkod ay nagtutulong-tulong para bigyang ayuda ang lahat ng mga naapektuhan ng pagsabog ng bulkang Taal. Kami po sa lalawigan ng Batangas ay nagsasama-sama upang tulungan ang isa't isa. Kasama po ang aming Gobernador Dodo Mandanas, Vice-Gobernador Mark Laviste, lahat po ng mayor at lahat ng mga opisyalis sa buong lalawigan ng Batangas, kasama po si Senador Ralph Recto. Now let me take this opportunity to thank everyone from our President Rodrigo Rua Duterte, Vice-President Lenny Robredo, fellow members of the House of Representatives, led by Speaker Alan Cayetano, Majority Leader Martin Romualdes, all the Deputy Speakers, all the members of the House of Representatives, for all the support, assistance, and prayers. Maraming salamat po sa inyong lahat. I would also like to thank...
I would also like to thank local governments within the Batangas province, and also from other provinces, cities, municipalities, for the support and assistance they have extended to those affected by this disaster. Thank you to the private sector, to the private individuals and others who took and are still taking the initiative in their own way to support all the efforts to alleviate the situation of our province and our evacuees. Maraming salamat po sa pagtulong at patuloy na pagtulong sa aming pong mga kababayan sa mga Batangenyo. Mr. Speaker, I would like also to thank FIVOC's team, led by Under-Secretary Renato Solidum for updating and informing us about the volcano's status. Naalala ko pa noong ako po'y Gobernador pa ng Batangas, isa po si Yusek Solidum na laging nanguuna sa pagsasagawa po ng Taal volcano hazards awareness and preparedness seminar workshop para sa mga local government units sa Batangas. I binabahagi po niya ang kanyang kaalaman tungkol sa mga katangian ng Taal volcano at ang kahalagahan ng pagkakaroon ng tinatawag na Disaster preparedness and response system bilang paghahanda sa oras ng pagsabog nito. At ito ay patuloy nilang ginawa at pinagbuti pa ang sistemang ito. Palagay ko'y nakatulong ito ng malaki kung kaya't naging zero casualty at naging mabilis ang pagsasagawa ng evacuation sa paanan ng bulkan no'ng biglang sumabog ito no'ng linggo, January 12, 2020. Ako po ay bumisita sa ilan po naming mga evacuation centers, kasama ko po si Senador Ralph Recto at ilang opisyalis ng Batangas para makita po ang kanilang kalagayan at para masigurado po natin na sila po ay nasa maayos na kinalalagyan. At sila naman po ay nasa maayos na kalagayan. Mr. Speaker, alam ko pong maraming hamon pa ang haharapi nila sa mga susunod na araw. Kaya lagi ko namang pong sinasabi sa kanila na huwag kayong mawawalan ng pag-asa. Susunod kayo sa pinag-uutos para sa inyong kaligtasan at patuloy na magdasal sa kaligtasan po ng aming pong mga Batangenyo. There is a vital need to require municipalities to establish a permanent evacuation center. These evacuation centers must be equipped with capabilities and facilities to respond and serve the needs of our people who would be affected by disasters and calamities. Ito po 'yung evacuation na tinatawag natin "one-stop shop." With this, we will avoid the displacement and disruption of the classes of our schoolchildren when it resumes. According to the Department of Education, classes in 120 schools have stopped because they are used as evacuation centers. And this is what I envisioned when I filed the bill requiring all the cities and municipalities to establish a permanent evacuation center, which I hope would be immediately passed by Congress. In addition, I hope we can craft more laws that would improve our local government units disaster preparedness capabilities so that we can ensure the safety, health, and economic well-being of our people. Finally, Mr. Speaker, our chief volcanologist said that the volcano is dangerous and an explosive eruption is still possible. And that is why our people have to stay outside the danger zone and temporarily take shelter in evacuation centers. Nahaharap po sila sa buhay na walang kasiguraduhan, walang tirahan, walang hanapbuhay, walang gaanong pangtustos sa mga pangunahing pangangailangan, walang gaanong makakapitan. Agrikultura po nila na nasira, na matayan ng mga hayop na kanila pong ginagamit sa kanila pong hanapbuhay. Pag-asa po ang aming pinanghahawakan. There must be something to hold on to, the very reason why there must be hope for everyone. There must be comprehensive plans for the future of our fellow Batangenyos. Mr. Speaker, I propose to this body for the creation of Taal Commission at the appropriate time, the relief, rehabilitation, and assistance of those affected by the eruption of Taal volcano. I also urge Congress to make a realignment of funds in coordination with the Committee on Appropriations, the Department of Budget and Management, and other sectors of the government for the immediate release of funds. This is to address the crisis caused by the volcano activity and in order to ensure the immediate rehabilitation and resettlement of our fellow Batangenyos. Pinag-uusapan na po ng malawakan ang plano kung paano matutulungan ang ating pong mga kababayan sa long term. Resettlement, rehabilitation, and recovery programs, and reconstruction of roads are some of our topmost priorities. Mr. Speaker, alam po natin na limitadong kakayahan ang ating pong mga local government units na tulungan sila. Kaya ako po ay nananawagan na patuloy po nating suportahan, damayan, ang mabigat na pasanin po ng ating mga kababayan sa Batangas na tinatamaan po ng pagsabog ng Taal volcano. Sa ngayon po, masasabi natin na overwhelming ang sobra-sobra pong tulong ang umaabot po sa aming lalawigan sa mga biktima po ng pagsabog ng Taal volcano. Akin lamang pong ipinagdarasal na sana po, huwag namang kami dumating sa panahon na tinatawag na donors' fatig. Huwag namang po sana dahil kakailanganin po namin kayo ng mahabang panahon. Rehabilitation and reintegration will take a while. It will not be easy to get back on our feet. But our determination and with your help, we will. Sabi nga po ng isang mangingisda sa lawan ng Taal, if I may quote: "Habang kami ay buhay, ay sadya, may pag-asa," unquote. Ang pagmamalasakit natin dito sa pamahalaan na mga nasa pribadong sektor at maging na mga pribadong individual sa kanilang kapakanan ang nagbibigay po sa kanila ng pag-asa. Muli po sa inyong lahat, maraming, maraming salamat po. At pagpalain po tayong lahat ng Panginoon Diyos, mabuhay po ang lalawigan ng Batangas, mabuhay po ang mga Batangenyo. Maraming salamat po sa inyong lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Santos Recto be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
No objection, the Chairignan. The speech of Deputy Speaker Recto be referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from the fourth district of Batangas, the Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia, be recognized on a question of privilege.
Congresswoman Bolilia of Board District of Batangas is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Sinubok ang tapang ng Batangenyo, binago ang mukha ng isang barako. Katulad ng balisong na sumisimbolo sa katatagan ng lalawigan, ang Batangenyo ay mananatiling matatag at lumalaban. Taal volcano, one of the world's smallest volcanoes. Yes, yet is truly a case of a small but terrible. Since its eruption last Sunday, families have fled their towns and are now in evacuation centers, while some are with their friends and relatives, anxiously waiting and hoping for the day that will be able to come back home. The latest eruption of Taal volcano left behind a mournful sense of gloom and docile landscape covered in thick layer of ash. It destroyed thousands of houses and livelihoods, damaged roads and infrastructure, wasted agricultural products, displaced animals, closed businesses, and open large fissures in the ground. The normalcy of life temporarily comes to halt. The beautiful, yet deadly Taal volcano for hundreds of years has sustained and nurtured generations of Batangenyas. Its majestic view captured our imagination, thereby making it a tourism hotspot which spurred economic growth of surrounding towns. Yet, the volcano is also much capable of destroying communities around it. The reality is, Taal volcano's restlessness in the aftermath of its eruption highlights our country's vulnerability to the most destructive forces of nature due to our geographic location in the ring of fire. Mr. Speaker, my district, the fourth district, has not been directly affected by the volcano's eruption. It has become a safe haven for evacuees from different municipalities. This representative has been doing rounds and has been to 20 evacuation centers in the all-in and out of District Four in the hope of afflicting the evacuee spirit and maintaining equanimity in this difficult situation. It's heartbreaking to see men and women crying, children trembling, who are clearly experiencing physical, psychological, and emotional stress. Just this morning, while I was in an evacuation center in the municipality of Taizan, I approached a man in his 60s. He's bound in a wheelchair. While I was asking about his condition, tears ran down his face. His sobs echoed untold suffering. He's a stroke survivor and couldn't talk. He has no family. The evacuees are in disbelief of what have become of their lives and hopes for the future. How can this be happening to the place which used to be their version of paradise? How can this be happening to a place where they built their homes, raised their families, and pursued their dreams? Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, I have no answer to this. Pagpagkinuusta mo ang mga evacuees, sasabihin nila sa'yo, "Wala na po kaming babalikan, wala na kaming kabuhayan", nawala ng lahat. Pero sasabihin ko, "Makakabali kayo, tatayo kayo, magkakaroon kayo ng kabuhayan." But, Mr. Speaker, I know that what I am saying is uncertain, and I'm just hoping. Despite all of these challenges, the overflowing choke of solidarity and support of our kababayan stir up powerful emotions in me. I've never seen such an act of humanity, maybe big or small. Volunteers and donors from all walks of life come in droves to provide relief. The evacuees may have a rough time right now, but they remain steadfast because of the massive support they got from their fellow Filipinos. Maraming salamat sa national government, maraming salamat sa presidente, sa Vice Presidente, to the members of the Senate, from the national agencies, to the members of Congress, to my colleagues here in the House of Representatives, to the local government units, to the private sectors. Maraming, maraming salamat po. I hope that this buoyant spirit be sustained and that we don't get tired of fatigue in extending whatever help we can because this situation may drag on for months. Yung bagyo, alam natin kung kailan matatapos. Yung baha, malawat madali ay uho pa. Yung sunog, kayang pigilan ng bombero, pero ang trahedyang ito sa Bulkang Taal, hindi mo kailan, hindi mo alam kung ilang araw, kung ilang buwan kang maghihintay. Mr. Speaker, I know, things look bleak right now. Large sections of municipalities in Taal volcano's shadow have to be risen, literally and figuratively from the ashes. The adverse impact will set our communities back by years or decades and leave people vulnerable to physical, social, and economic hardships. Rehabilitation, reconstruction, and sustainable recovery to help restore livelihoods, assets, and economic activities is a colossal task. Both the national and local governments must foot forward a post-disaster response strategy to rebuild lives, livelihoods, and communities in a manner that leads to long-term, sustainable development. I am confident that my esteemed colleagues in the House of Representatives would heed the call for action for a more responsive and enhanced disaster risk management and preparedness. In closing, I would like to say that my fellow Batangenyos are incredibly inspirational to all of us. Taal volcano's wrath has not damaged the legendary Batangenyos spirit. Just like the volcano, the Batangenyos may be calm in the surface, but underneath is a burning determination and fierce resolve to overcome and win the most difficult challenges. Taal volcano may expel its wrath over and over again throughout decades and even centuries, but the Batangenyos' love affair with its volcano will never be extinguished. Ala eh, sigurado naman tayo na pagkatapos ng lahat ng ito, mas tatalim at tatalas ang balisong sa Batangas, babalik ang sigla ng mukha ng isang barako at tatayo muli ang Batangenyo. Maraming salamat po at magandang hapon.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Bolilia be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
No objection, the Chairignan. Motion to approve the speech of Congresswoman Bolilia be referred to Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, one-minute suspension.
Special Suspender.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the lady from ACIS Partilist, the Honorable Nina Taduran, be recognized on a question of privilege.
The Representative Nina O. Taduran of Partilist, ACIS, is recognized.
Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat, at nawahi naging maligaya at ligtas ang inyong bagong taon. Ginong Speaker, bago ko po simula ng aking privileged speech, hinihiling ko po sa ating lahat dito na mag-alay tayo ng isang maikling panalangin para sa mga kababayan nating mga Batangenyo at kalapit na lugar na ngayon ay nakakaranas ng takot at pangamba sa panganib na dulot ng pag-aalboroto ng Bulkang Taal. Diyos naming makapangyarihan, itinataas namin ang aming mga puso sa iyo ng may kagalakan. Para sa lahat ng iyong lalang sa mundong ito, kung saan man kami ay nabibilang, para sa iyong patnubay sa aming mga kailangan at para sa iyong karunungan na gumagabay sa landas ng buong kalawakan. Diyos naming makapangyarihan, muli kaming humaharap sa panahon ng unos, dulot ng pagsabog ng Bulkang Taal. Naniniwala kami na sa pamamagitan ninyo ay mapapahupa ng inyong makapangyarihang kamay ang bangis nito. Iligtas mo po kami sa kapahamakan, lalo na ang mga residente, bata o matanda, mayaman man o mahirap. Nawahi paigtingin mo rin po sa amin ang diwa ng damayan, pagmamalasakit, at pangangalaga sa kapwa at kalikasan. Ito ang aming samo at dalangin sa ngalan ni Kristo, kasama ng Espíritu Santo, amen. Ginong Speaker, bago pa man ako sumalang sa pambihirang pagkakataong ito, taimtim kong pinag-isipan taimtim kong pinag-isipan at kinonsulta ang mga tao, alam kong higit na nakakaunawa sa akin kung tama ba at makatwiran ang paglalakad ko sa sinapit mula sa kamay ng mga mapagsamantalang individual sa loob mismo ng isang mall car park na inakala kong ligtas at mapapangalagaan ang seguridad ng bawat sasakyang nakaparada doon. Bagamat tuluyan ng humopa ang incidenteng aking kinasangkutan, minabuti kong tumayo ngayong hapong ito hindi upang wasakin ang credibilidad ng establishmentong sangkot kundi maging eye-opener sa kapwa kong mambabatas at bawat mamamayan. Gayun din ang hangarin kong maiwasan kung di man matudukan ang mga incidenteng nangnakawan sa mall car parks o alin mang pribadong kahalintulad nito. Ginoong Speaker, marahil ay alam na ng karamihan ang dikanais-nais na nangyari sa aking sasakyan noong hapon ng ikaanim ng inero ng taong kasalukuyan. Para sa mga hindi pa nakakabatid, hayaan po ninyong ilahad ko ang nangyari at naway maging simula ito upang muli nating ikonsidera ang pagsasabatas na mga panukalang may kinalaman sa mall car parks at kahalintulad na establishmento. Batay sa naging salaysay ng aking anak bandang alas 3 ng hapon, matapos akong hiya-tid sa Malakanyang upang saksihan ang paglalada ng Pangulong Duterte sa 2020 National Budget. Ay ipinarada ng aking driver ang sasakyan sa car park na isang malaking mall sa Santa Mesa, Maynila. Lumabas muna ng sasakyan ng aking anak kasama ang driver at ilan sa aking staff upang kumain habang naghihintay sa akin. Magaalasing ko ng hapon ng tawagan ko ang aking driver, ngunit hindi sumasagot. Kaya't minabuti kong tawagan ang aking anak. Ayon sa kanya, nangpunta ka ng driver at staff ang sasakyan habang sila ay nasa isang telco company sa loob mismo ng mall upang magpa-load. Natuklasa ng mga ito na basag na ang salamin ito sa tagiliran at maraming gamit sa loob ang nawala. Nagmamadali akong nagtungoroon o pengpersonal na makita ang lahat. Kung kaya ko lang liparin ang nasabing mall mula sa Malakanyang, ginawa ko. Buti na lamang isa sa ating mga kasamahan ang nagsilbi kong "Night in a Shining Armor" sa katauhan ni Deputy Speaker Conrad Estrada III ng Abono Partilist. At hindi ko ikinahiyang nakisakay sa kanyang kotse na siyang nagatid sa akin sa naturang mall. Ginoong Speaker, nanlumo ako pagdating sa pinangyarihan ng krimen. Hindi ko napigilang maiyak dahil sa halong takot at galit. Takot dahil hindi ko alam ang gagawin ko kung may nagawang o may masamang nangyari sa aking anak at sa mga kasamahan ko. Galit dahil may nagsamantala at nagnakaw ng aking mga gamit. Higit pa ang nakakalungkot ang mabagal na pagtungol o pagtugon ng mall security at customer relations service sa naturang incidente. Lumabas sa aking pagsusuri at pagtatanong na walang CCTV camera na nakatutok sa lugar kung saan nakaparada ang mga sasakyan. Ang mga CCTV camera ng car park ay nasa entrance at exit lamang. Wala ring security guard na nag-iikot sa car park. Nakalagay sa parking ticket na ang bayad sa paggamit ng parking space ay 40 pesos. Ang tanong, ang 40 pesos ba ay bayad lang sa parking space? O buko doon, may iba pa ba ang tungkulin ang may-ari ng car park? Ginoong Speaker, ako po ay hindi isang abugada na malalim ang kaalaman sa batas. Subalit hindi naman po ako mang-mang upang hindi maunawaan na pag nagbayad ka sa parking slot, may obligasyon ang may-ari ng car park na tiyaking hindi ka magagambala sa buong panahon ng iyong pagparada ng sasakyan. Isang payak na halimbawa ay ang kontrata ng pag-upa sa bahay, kapag nagbayad ka ng upa, ay may tungkulin ang may-ari na siguruin na walang iistorbo sa'yo sa pananatili mo sa nasabing bahay. Ibig sabihin nito ay hindi lang parking space ang binabayaran sa car park. Kasama dapat sa bayad ang pagtitiyak na walang mangyaring masama sa sasakyan habang nakaparada ito. Hindi maaaring sabihin ang may-ari ng car park na wala silang pananagutan sa kaling manakaw o may mangyaring masama sa sasakyan. Kaakibat ng pagtanggap nila ng bayad ay ang tungkuling pangalagaan ng seguridad ng sasakyan at ng mga bagay sa loob nito. Ginoong Speaker, malinaw na hindi nagampanan ng mall car park ang tungkuling ito. Katibayan nito ay ang kawala ng mga CCTV cameras na nakatutok sana sa mga nakaparadang sasakyan. Kung may security guard sana na nag-iikot-ikot, ay nagdalawang isip ang salarin o mga salarin. Sa palagay ko, kung hindi ako isang mambabatas, ay hindi pagtutoonan ng pansin ng mall ang pangyayari. Nagkataon lamang na mambabatas ako kung kaya sila na mismo ang nakipagugnayan sa aking staff. Pero papaano kung isang karaniwang huwanda la cruz ang biktima? Pakikinggan kaya ang kanyang hinain? Sa aking pagninilay-nilay, marahil ay niloob na may kapal ang nangyari. Siguro ay may mahalagang mensahe sa likod ng nakawang nag-anap. Ginoong Speaker, panahon na siguro upang muling pag-aralan ng kapulungang ito, kung makatarungan ba na hayaang maghugas kamay ang mga may-ari ng car parks tuwing may mananakaw na sasakyan o may nawawala sa loob nito? Wala ba talaga silang pananagutan dito? Noong mga nakalipas na kongreso ay may mga panukalang batas na isunimete upang panagutin ang mga may-ari ng malls o car parks. Kung sakaling mawala ang sasakyan o may mawala sa loob nito o may masira dito, sa di ko malamang dahilan, wala niisamaan sa mga panukala ang naging ganap na batas. Ginoong Speaker, ako po ay nagsaliksik at nalaman ko na ang lungsod na makati ay mayroon ng batas tungkol dito. Ordinance number 2001-096. Sa ilalim ng ordinancean ito, pinapanagot ang may-ari ng parking facility pag may nawala sa loob, nasira o nawala mismo ang isang sasakyan. May isang desisyon ang kataas-taas ang kukuma din akong nabasa, ang kaso ng Triple V Food Services Incorporated versus Filipino Merchants Insurance Company Incorporated, General Register Number 160544 dated February 21, 2005. Sa kasong ito, ay sinabi ng Korte Suprema na may pananagutan ang may-ari ng parking area ng mawalaang kotse na nakaparada doon. Ito ay sa kabila na may nakasaad sa parking ticket na management and staff will not be responsible for any loss of or damage incurred on the vehicle nor of valuables contained therein. Sabi pa ng Korte, "The parking claim stop embodying the terms and condition of the parking, including that of relieving petitioner from any loss or damage to the car, is essentially a contract of adhesion, drafted and prepared as it is by the petitioner alone with no participation whatsoever on the part of the customers who merely adheres to the printed stipulations therein appearing, while contracts of adhesion are not void in themselves. Yet, this court will not hesitate to rule out blind adherence thereto if they prove to be one-sided under the attendant facts and circumstances." Ginoong Speaker, sa pagkakaunawa ko sa desisyon na ito, ang parking claim stop daw na naglalaman ng lahat ng napagkasunduan kabila na ang pagpapawalang sala sa may-ari ng car park kung sakaling may mangyari o mawala ang sasakyan ay isang uri ng kontrata ng adhesyon na ginawa ng may-ari ng car park at walang kinalaman ang may-ari ng sasakyan. Hindi raw magaatubili ang Korte Suprema na ipawalang visa ang mga ganitong uri ng kontrata, lalo pa at napatunayan na masyadong pabor ito sa isa sa mga partido ng kontrata. Bilang karagagang kaalaman marahil ay batid ng nakakarami ang isang TV report ni Ginoong Dolan Castro noong ikapitohan ng inero ng taong kasalukuyan bandang alas 6:24 ng gabi na nagsaad na batay sa kanilang datos na nakalap umaabot sa 72 ang incidente ng basag kotse sa Quezon City noong nakaraang 2019 ang naitala ng Quezon City Police District. Ibig sabihin, parang karaniwan na lamang ganitong incidente na tila ba hindi masolusyonan ang mga otoridad? Magtataka kayo marahil kung bakit ang datos ni Ginoong Castro ang aking naging basehan? Sapagat ang pambansang kapulisan ay bigong magbigay ng datos okdito at mistu lang ipinagtuturuan ang aking staff kung saan makakakuha ng payak na datos. Ginoong Speaker, ang aking karanasan, ang aking naranasan mula sa kamay ng mga mapagsamantalang individual ang siyang naging mitsa upang isulungko ang panukalang batas na siyang magre-regulate upang magkaroon ng uniform parking fees at kung hanggang saan ang dapat na maging pananagutan ng mall car park owners at iba pang private establishments na nagtatagline ng kahalintulad na car parks. Kaysa ako ng ating magiting na kasamahan sa camera na si Congressman Wes Gatschalian na isinusulong ang House Bill Number 3262 o higit kilala bilang an act regulating the imposition of fees for the use of parking spaces and facilities in shopping malls, hospitals, schools, and similar establishments, including vacant lots used exclusively for parking and prescribing penalties for violation thereof. Maigting ang aking paniniwala na kung maisasabatas ito, higit na magiging responsable ang car park owners at iba pang car park establishments na mapapapangalagaan at masisiguro ang interes at kapakanan ng kanilang customers. Ginoong Speaker, sa mga pagkakataong ito, umaapila ako sa mga kapwa kong mambabatas na magkaisa tayo upang matigil na ang labis-labis na paniningil at pananamantala ng car park owners sa itinatakda nilang parking fees. Panahon na upang masawta ito at ma-regulate ang controversial parking fees. Ako po ay isang muting tinig sa karimblan lamang na nananawagan sa aking mga kapwa mambabatas na bigyan natin ang pansin ang suliraning ito. Ako po ay naniniwala na pag nagbayad ka ng parking fees sa alin mang malls o car parks, may tungkulin sila na pangalagaan ang seguridad ng inyong sasakyan at lahat na mga nasa loob nito. Hindi po itong isang issue lamang para sa isang mall. Manapay saklaw ng paglalakad kong nito ang lahat ng malls at iba pang private car parks sa buong bansa na kanilang obligasyong tiyakin at siguruin ang bawat sasakyang pumaparada kasama na ang ano mang mahalagang bagay na nasa loob nito. Ginoong Speaker, sa labanang ito, mayahalintulad ko ang aking sarili kay David na humamon sa dambohalang si Goliath. Subalit hindi ako natatakot dahil alam ko nakakampi ko ang Diyos at nasa tabi ko kayo. Ilang incidente pa ba ng karanasan kong ito ang hihintayin natin upang tuluyang matigil ito? Kapag pinagkaisahan natin ang dambohala, tiyak ang ating tagumpay. Muli po, maraming salamat sa inyong pakikinig at kasihan na watayo ng may kapal, Diyos mabalos po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Taduran be referred to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved. The speech of Congresswoman Taduran be referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Suspend.
Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we nominate, I move to nominate and elect Representative Jose C. Alvarado to the Committee on Games and Amusement as a member.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that to nominate and elect Representative Eric Yap as a member of the Committee on Public Accounts. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, I move that we nominate and elect Representative Miki Violago as a member for the Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Representative Eric Yap of Partilist Act C I S be designated as the Legislative Caretaker for the Lone District of Benguet. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday, I move that we open the Privilege Art.
Still any objection, the Chair Hingnan? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the first member to avail of the Privilege Art is the lady from Partilist Act Teachers. I move that we recognize Representative Franz Castro.
The representative of ACT Teachers, Representative Franz Castro is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon, Ginoong Speaker, at sa mga kapwa kong mambabatas. Gusto ko lampong iparating ang kalagayan ngayon ng ating mga biktima ng Tal eruption noong nakaraang Sabadong. Naging bahagi po ng relief operation na pinungunahan ng mga guro mula sa Quezon City Public School Teachers Association. Nagpunta kami sa munisipyo ng Ibaan na Command Center at sa San Agustin Elementary School kung saan mayroong 13 families or 76 individual ang nandoon. Kasalukuyang walang pasok sa buong Ibaan kung kaya't apektado rin ang mga estudyante kahit hindi sakop ng danger zone ang Ibaan. Sunod kaming nagpunta sa Tanawan Batanggas sa Pantay Elementary School kung saan andon ang Pantay Command Center na may record na 17 evacuation centers at nagkakanlong na 123 families o 390 individuals. Base sa aming paglilibot, Mr. Speaker, napansin namin na mas nagsusustina ng pagkain at pangangailangan ng mga iba. at pangangailangan ng mga evacuees ay ang spontanyong donasyon at relief operation mula sa ating mga individual, NGO, at iba't ibang mga organisasyon. Nasaan 'yung mga preposition na food packs na dapat nakabantay kung magkaroon na sa kunah at iba pang mga ayuda mula sa national government? Dahil ginawang evacuation center ang mga eskwelahan, nawawala ng pasok ang mga estudyante at walang kasiguruhan kung kailan makababalik sa kanilang mga klase. Imbis na dapat ay may mga permanenting evacuation centers. Dahil hindi naman bago sa atin ito ang mga kalamidad na tulad na mga bagyo, lindol, at tu nga pagsabog ng bulkan. Kung pagbabasihan ang kasaysayan, masasabing matindi at distraktib ang pagsabog ng bulkang taal. Ngunit parang hindi ganap na handa ang ating gobyerno. Sa halip na dagdagan ang pondon ng mga frontliner agencies sa disaster response tulad na mga LGUs, DILG, DSWD, DEEPED, at iba pa, ang pondon ito ay lalo pang nabawasan. Sa pag-aaral po, Mr. Speaker, ang Pilipinas ay ang pangsiam sa disaster risk worldwide. Dalawampu mahigit na typhoon ang dumadalaw kada taon sa ating bansa. Meron pong mga, noong isang taon po sa Mindanao ay mga earthquake naman. At noong 2013 ay yung typhoon surge. So ito po ay 74% po ng ating populasyon, Mr. Speaker, ay vulnerable sa disaster. Sana po ay maging maagap at epiktibong matulungan ang ating mga nasalanta o 'yung ating mga kababayan na kabilang dito sa sinasabi nating danger zone. Ang ayudang naisip ng gobyerno ay sa pamamagitan ng pautang o calamity. Sabi nga ni tatay at ni nanay na nakausap natin sa isang evacuation center. Nagpapasalamat sila sa dami ng mga pagkain, sa dami ng mga suportang material nakakailanganin sa evacuation center. Pero iniisip nila ngayon kung saan sila pupunta, kung ano ang kanilang mga magiging hanapbuhay at livelihood? Dahil ayaw naman daw nila na habang panahon ay nakahingi ng suporta sa ating gobyerno. So ito, Mr. Speaker, ang tinitignan natin na dapat nating paghandaan. Bukod pa po doon sa sinasabi nating permanent evacuation center sa bawat tatlo o apat na barangay para po doon sa kung dumarating po ang anumang sakuna o disaster ay meron pong permanenting pupuntahan ang ating mga kababayan at hindi sa ating mga eskwelahan. Alam naman natin po, Mr. Speaker, napakahalaga ang edukasyon sa ating mga kabataan. At kung sa ganitong sakuna, ang kapinsalaan ay mapipinsala din ang karapatan para sa edukasyon, ano na lang po ang magiging kalidad ng ating edukasyon ng ating mga kabataan. Hindi na bago sa ating bansa ang kalamidad, ngunit hindi pa rin ganun tahan da ang gobyerno. Hanggang ngayon hindi pa rin tapos ang pagbibigay ng Yolanda assistance kahit anim na taon na ang nakalipas, pati na rin 'yung mga tulong noong buhol earthquake. Dapat, Mr. Speaker, matuto na po tayo sa leksyon at hindi na maulit ang tinatawag nating criminal negligence, disaster response, and assistance na nangyari doon sa Yolanda. So ito lang po, Mr. Speaker, at magandang hapon sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of Representative Castro be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Any objection? Chair Hingnan motion is approved. The speech of Congresswoman Castro be refer to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the next member to avail of the privilege hour is the representative from Kabataan Partilist. I move that we recognize Representative Sarah Jane Elago.
Congresswoman Sarah Jane Elago of Partilist Kabataan, speak up, thanks.
Maraming salamat, Ginoong speaker. First and foremost, Kabataan Partilist, its chapter leaders and members in this representation would like to extend our solidarity to all the evacuees in facing the adversity of calamity aftermath. We convey our gratitude and appreciation to all donors, volunteers, and public servants who are leading and contributing to relief and rehabilitation efforts following the eruption of Taal volcano. Na is po naming batiin, Ginoong speaker, ang lahat ng nagtutulungan sa Tulong Kabataan Relief and Rehabilitation Network at hindi na mabilang na mga individual at mga organisasyon na nagtutulungan para sa mga kadiyad na pangangailangan ng ating mga kababayan at pakikiisa sa pangmatagalang pagsasaayos at pagtatayo muli ng mga nasalantang lugar. Asahan niyo po, nakasama niyo rin ang mga kabataan tungo sa pagbangon ng lahat ng apektado na komunidad. Babangon rin ang ating mga komunidad at kinakailangan ng mahipit na pagkakaisa upang 'yan ay makamtan. Ginoong speaker, hangad din naming bigyan ng parangal at pagpupugay ang mabuting gawi at ambag ni Nario John Abel, Maximino Alcantara III. Parehong dalawampung, 22 years old at si Darwin Lahara, siya po ay dalawampot anim na taong gulang. Sila po ang tatlong estudyante at kabataan na nasawi sa aksidente sa daan. Sila po, Ginoong speaker, ay pauwi na mula sa paghatid ng tulong sa mga nagbakwit. Matapos ang pagsabog ng taal. Mr. Speaker, we must never forget their good deeds and contribution. We shall celebrate and honor the lives of Rio Abel, Maximino Alcantara, and Darwin Lahara by heeding the call for volunteerism and genuine service to the nation and the people. Before this representation proceeds, Mr. Speaker, let us all offer them a moment of silent prayer. Tunay na ang buwan ng inero, Ginoong speaker, ay napuno ng mga aktong tulungan at pagmamahal. Tuloy-tuloy ang tulong taal at sa iba pang nasalanta ng mga kalamidad. Wag rin po nating kalimutan na sa susunod na buwan, ang buwan ng pebrero ay buwan rin po ng pagmamahalan. Pagmamahalan ng mga matrikola at iba pang bayarin sa mga eskwelahan. For the information of the honorable members of this August chambers, the submission for all proposal for tuition and other fee increases has already started this month. Consultations on the proposed increases will be held next month, February, based on CHED and DEEPED guidelines. Amid the displacement, loss, and devastation wrought by typhoons Tisoi and Ursula, earthquakes in Mindanao, and the eruption of Taal volcano, we call for the immediate imposition of a national moratorium on tuition and other fee increases on all educational institutions. Apart from our efforts and calls to provide immediate relief and fast distribution of aid to all affected communities, a tuition moratorium is necessary to give the people, especially the parents and students, a much-needed respite as they rebuild their homes and their lives while ensuring learning continuity. The onslaught of typhoons and earthquakes in the second half of 2019 alone left billions of damages in schools, hospitals, homes, with thousands of evacuees and displaced students, teachers, and workers. This 2020 classes in Tisoi and Ursula hit areas resume in tents or other temporary learning spaces. Double shifting of classes is also being implemented to accommodate the high number of students. Since the eruption of Taal, the Department of Education reports about 2.4 million students affected with 1,055 personnel and 30,814 learners in 78 public schools located in the 14-kilometer radius danger zone of the volcano and about 1,600 classrooms in 141 nearby public schools, which are accommodating more than 58,000 people. Congressional support for learning continuity and strengthened oversight on calamity and quick response spots are imperative as they are matters of urgency and necessity. Now is also the right time to tackle our measures on building permanent evacuation centers having witnessed the dire effect of calamities, one after the other, on the operation of our public schools. Particularly in higher education, more than half, 52.7%, or 1.7 million, are enrolled in private institutions out of the total number of students at 3.2 million. Fee hikes in private higher education institutions almost doubled since the enactment of Train Law, which likewise contributed to unprecedented price increases in food and other commodities. Kung titignan po natin sa nakaraang tatlong taon lamang narito po ang mga tuition and other school fees increases at kapansin-pansin dito kung gaano halos na dumoble ang mga naging pagtataas o pagmamahal ng mga matrikola at iba pang mga bayarin sa eskwelahan. Mula po noong academic year 2017-2018, mula 6.96, anitong nakaraan lamang na academic year, ito na po ay naging 10.7%. At para naman sa other school fees, hindi lang po tuition ang nagtataas kundi 'yung mga napakarami pang mga bayarin sa eskwelahan. Mula 6.9% noong 2017 hanggang 2018, ito po sa ngayon ay nasa 12.89% o kumbaga nasa 250 pesos a kada estudyante at kada term sa isang academic year. In fact, Mr. Speaker, stopping these increases on tuition and other school fee is long overdue because of the skyrocketing cost of education due to decades-long policies of deregulation and commercialization, while wage increases remain very low. Any tuition and other school fee increase spells an additional burden aggravated by the already high prices of goods, meager salaries, and contractualization on top of the dire impact of rice tarification law on farmers and agriculture at large. Mr. Speaker, sa ating mga kapwa mababatas, mga kapwa lingkod bayan, sobra-sobra na po ang paghihirap ng ating mga kababayan, lalong-lalo na sa gitna pa ng kalamidad. It is in this light that we strongly urge Congress, our fellow legislators, to support the call for a national moratorium on tuition and other school fee increases and exhaust all means to support learning continuity in all disaster-hit areas. Maraming salamat po, Ginoong speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of Representative Elago be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Objection, the Chair stand, motion is approved. The speech of Congresswoman Elago be refer to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to avail the privilege hour, I move that we close this session.
Mr. Objection, the Chair stand, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Resolution Number 571 from the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Objection, the Chair stand. So the Resolution Number 571 be refer to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization. Majority Leader.
Majority Leader. We would like to acknowledge the guests of our Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Ferdinand, Honorable Martin G. Romualdes, they were here a while ago. They are from the Municipal Office Officials of the Municipality of Teresa Rizal, the Honorable Raúl Espalino, Municipal Mayor, Honorable Jose Jeriel Villiegas, Municipal Vice Mayor, Sangguniambayang Members Honorable Aurelio G. Salibio Jr., Honorable Chris Appa Francisco, Honorable Joshua T. Sanuse, Honorable Bong Santiago, Honorable Nino S. Damaso, Honorable Fernando N. De La Cruz, SK Federation President Honorable Jerry Avon Beritiz, ABC President Honorable Jose M. Mandangit, ABC President and Sangguniambayang Member Honorable Howard Francisco.
To the guest of Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, na kanina po nandito, alak pa po natin, welcome to the house of the people. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the continuation of the deliberation of House Bill Number 5832, an act creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment, defining its mandate, powers, and functions, appropriating funds therefore. Mr. Speaker, the first interpreter would be Representative Ferdinand Argaite, Partilist, bayan muna, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Argaite, at bayan muna, he's recognized.
Maraming salamat po, kagalang-galang na speaker. Pahintulutan ba ng ating sponsor ng ating House Bill 5832 regarding the creation of the Department of Filipino Overseas and Foreign Employment and others para sa clarification sa mayang katanungan hingil sa minumukahing bagong departamento? Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po. Pwede ho bang malaman, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, ano ba ang pinakaibuturan kung bakit sa kasalukuyan, pagkatapos ng practically almost 50 years ng pagpapatupad ng tinatawag na Labor Export Program, ay magtatayo ngayon tayo ng isang full-fledged na departamento kompleto na may department secretaries, secretary, may under secretaries, assistant secretaries, and full complement? And obviously, kapag ito'y maaprubahan, magkakaroon rin ng kaukulang budget. Ito ang programang ito na dati pinatutupad ng Department of Labor Employment ay ngayon ililipat sa naturang proposed department. Ano ho ba ang pinakabood o rasional sa mukahing pagtatayo ng departamentong ito, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, siguro po ang isa sa pinakaimportanteng rason kung bakit kailangan natin ang departamentong ito, Department of Filipino Overseas and Foreign Employment, dahil sa kagustuhan na rin na ang ating mga overseas Filipino workers na nararapat naman na ngayon natin ibigay sa kanila matagal na nilang minimity na departamento upang sa ngayon ay isa na lamang ang departamento ang kanilang pinupuntahan para humingi ng tulong o kaya'y kumuha ng mga information at mga malaman din nila 'yung mga policies para din sa proteksyon ng kanilang mga karapatan. Ito po ay siguro sinimulan noong sila ay humingi ng tulong sa ating presidente. sa ating presidente Rodrigo Duterte. At 'yan naman ay sinabi ng ating presidente during the Sona. At, uh, siguro po na talagang napapanahon na. Alam ko pong matagal na itong pinopropose at, uh, ngayon ay pinag-uusapan. At tingin ko po ay parami ng parami ang ating mga overseas Filipino workers nasa humigit-kumulang 2.3 million na po sila. At malaki po ang kontribisyon ng ating mga overseas workers. Siguro ay umaabot sa mga, sa dollar remittances na lamang ay nasa 30 billion, uh, uh, US dollars ang kanilang kontribisyon sa isang taon. So nararapat lamang po na bigyan natin ng pansin ang kanilang mga kahilingan upang sa ngayon ay mabigyan sila ng kaukulang, uh, uh, tulong. Lalong-lalo na po sa ngayon na maraming problema ang hinaharap ng ating mga Filipino overseas workers.
Maraming salamat po sa kasagutan sa katunungan na Mrs. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, na ito daw ay ayon sa inyo ay bunga ng clamor o demand ng ating mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat para sa usapin ng pakikipag-ugnayan sa gobyerno, lalo na sa usapin ng employment abroad ay ayon sa inyo ay mapadali. Kumbaga ay, uh, ang essence ay one-stop shop. Uh, bakit po ba, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor? Sa ngayon, may mga ilang ahensya ng gobyerno na gumagampan na ng tungkulin ito. Uh, kabilang dyan ang mga ahensya to the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration na kung di niyo na po tatanungin, ang kinatawang ito ay nagsidbe sa ahensyang ito for sixteen years bilang isang empleado. Uh, gayon din ang Philippine Overseas Employment Administration na itinatag rin na isa pang institusyon para rin paglingkuran daw ang interest ng mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat. Nandiyan din 'yung, uh, Commission for Filipinos Overseas, or CFO. Uh, may bahagi ang Department of Labor Employment ng mga ahensya dito kasama ang kanilang Philippine Overseas Labor Officers, or Polo, para sa usapin ng pagtingin doon sa kalagayan ng ating mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat. Katulad na rin ang Department of Foreign Affairs na may mga programa at serbisyo para sa kanilang assistance to nationals abroad. Hindi po ba sasapat ang mga ahensyang ito doon sa mga pangunahing mga pangangailangan ng ating mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat? Uh, napakarami, hindi ko alam mo sa ibang ibang bansa, kung meron rin silang ganung kahalintulad na mga government agencies na bunga na nga ng nabanggit na Labor Export Program, ay napakaraming ahensya ng gobyerno na itinilaga para lamang dito'y bigyan ng katugunan ang malaking sulirenin ng ating mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat. Hindi po ba sasapat itong napakaraming ahensyang ito? At kung sa inyong tansya ay kailangang baguhin at magtayo ng isang departamento para bigyan ng tugon ang mga sulirenin ng ating mga manggagawa sa, manggagawang ibayong dagat? Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, 'yun na nga po ang problema. Napakadami po nung mga tinatayo o tinatalagang mga ahensya sa ibat-ibang, uh, uh, katulad ng Polo, um, OMA, at, uh, 'yung sa social welfare development. Pagdami po nung mga ahensya na yon ay lalo pong nalilito 'yung ating mga kababayan kapag sila ay may problema. Kaya nga po gusto natin na under isang departamento lamang ang kanilang lalapitan. Sa umpisa pa lamang na sila'y madedeploy, alam na nila kung ano ang kanilang pupuntahan at ano ang pwedeng mangyari sa kanila. Sa sandaling sila ay, uh, umunta sa ibang, uh, sa ibang, uh, ibang dako upang magtrabaho. Ito pong mga nabanggit na kanina mga ahensya dapat lamang po itong pagsamasamahin sa isang departamento upang sa ngayon ay isa lamang 'yung secretary na nagsabihin na natin nagmamando upang sa ngayon ay hindi po ito mangyari na puro coordination lamang ang ginagawa ng bawat isang ahensya. For example, isa pong, uh, manggagawa lalapit sa, ng tulong sa DSWD ay 'yung pala meron din siyang problema sa mga pansasaman, pananamantala sa kanilang mga, uh, kamag-anak sa, na OFW. So hindi po yon 'yung tamang departamento. Kaya nga po pinopropose, uh, natin na magkaroon ng isang departamento upang sa ngayon lahat po ng ahensyang ito ay magsamasama at sila ay makikinig sa isang secretary na siyang, uh, nakakaintindi at pwede silang direktang bigyan ng, uh, kautusan kung ano ang gagawin sa mga pangangailangan ng ating mga manggagawa.
Uh, maraming salamat po sa inyong kasagutan, uh, Mrs. Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker. Um, doon sa tinagal kong sa pagtatrabaho, uh, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor, sa OWA, naalala ko ang paulit-ulit na usapin hingil sa patakaran sa usapin ng overseas employment. Kundi po ako nagkakamali, ito'y sinimulan, at least bilang isang formal program, ay nung panahon ni Pangulong Ferdinand Marcos na nung 1970s, bunga na nga rin nung napakalaking demand for Filipinos dito sa Middle East, bunga nung, uh, pagtaas ang presyo ng langis, ay nagrequire ng napakaraming manggagawa. Bagamat totoo sa ating kasaysayan, marami na pong, uh, migration ng mga Filipino sa iba't ibang bansa. Kahit panahon pa ng, uh, nung mga first migration sa mga Filipinos sa Estados Unidos bilang maging mga pineapple at apple pickers uh, nasa tuna cannery dito sa Alaska at iba pa. At iba nga po dito ay nakilala bilang mga magigiting na OFWs tulad ni, uh, ang poet na si Carlos Bolosan. Pero kung mababalik tayo ngayon dito sa kasaysayan ng, uh, pagpagkaroon ng overseas employment program, gusto ko lang maki, malaman kung anumutingin ang ating kagalang-galang na Mrs. Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, dito sa konsepto na dapat ang overseas employment program ay isang pansamantalang programa. Sapagkat ito ay hindi tumutugon doon sa pangmatagalang lokal na empleyo sa sarili nating bansa, tulad na rin ng hangarin ng mga ibang gobyerno sa kanila-mangka-bansa. Ang Labor Export Program ay fenomeno sa Pilipinas at ilang mahihirap na bansa. Normally, any government will strive to provide local employment so that mas malapit sila sa kanila mga pamilya, mas mapoprotektahan sila ng kanila mga gobyerno, matitiyak na 'yung kanilang mga pangangailangan bilang gobyerno, bilang policy makers sa usapin ng labor relations na poprotektahan 'yung mga kanilang mga manggagawa. Ngunit dito ngayon sa Labor Export Program na aking pananaw ay layunin rin itong pagtatayo ng departamento, hindi na gagawing stopgap measure ang Labor Export Program by the mere fact that we're establishing a department. We are essentially saying that forever na magiging overseas Filipino workers ang mga manggagawa. Forced migration ang tawag ng mga ibang grupo. Sapagkat ito'y sapilitang, napipilitang magtrabaho sa ibayong dagat, bunga ng kawalang oportunidad dito sa ating bansa. O di kaya, kung may oportunidad, trabahong kontraktwal, trabahong mababang pasahod, trabahong walang kasigurahan sa trabaho. Sa pagtatayo ba ng departamento, ang sinasabi ba natin, Mrs. Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, na tayo ay forever magde-deploy na mga manggagawa sa, na napipilitang magtrabaho abroad sa halip na lubikha tayo ng lokal na trabaho sa ating bansa para kahit paano 'yung gobyerno mismo ang mapoprotektahan ang kanyang mga manggagawa? Sa pananaw po ng ating, uh, ng ating sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, ito ba ang isang layunin rin ng naturang departamento, uh, Mrs. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor?
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, sa aking pong pananaw ay, uh, hindi po natin polisiya ang paalisin ang ating mga kababayan upang magtrabaho sa ibang bansa. Nagkataon lamang po na ito'y isang karapatan na pumili kung ano ang makakagaling sa kanila, kaya po ang karamihan ay naghahanap ng ibang oportunidad sa ibang bansa. Pero ito po ay, uh, sa aking pong, uh, pananaw ay isang opportunity lamang na dapat ay tinuturing natin na isang asset na sila'y matuto sa ibang bansa dahil pagdating doon sila'y maraming matututunan at dadating ang panahon magagamit nila ang kanilang mga natutunang skills at mga pinagaralan para bumalik dito sa ating bansa. Nagkataon lamang po na marami tayo, marami ang population ng ating bansa at marami din ang naghahangad ng magandang buhay. At sinabi ko nga po, 'yan po isang karapatan. Katulad po ng inyong lingkod, ako po ay nagtrabaho sa Amerika ng labing dalawan taon at ako po ay nakabalik at ngayon po ay naglilingkod sa ating gobyerno. Ganun din po ang karamihan. Ito po ay hindi permanenteng polisiya bagkos ito po ay, uh, tinuturing natin parang tine-train lang natin sila sa ibang bansa. In fact, in China, Mr. Speaker, ang mga tao po doon ay iniencourage na magtrabaho sa ibang bansa upang sila'y matuto, explore the world upang sila'y makabalik na merong kaalaman sa kanilang bansa. Napakaswerte nga po natin dito sa atin, sa ating bansa. Marami tayong mga skilled workers, marami tayong workers na pwede pang bumalik dito sa ating bansa. Ang bansang Japan po ay naubos na dahil wala po silang sapat na population upang sila ay magkaroon pa ng mga skilled workers sa darating na panahon. Naghahanap na po sila ng foreign workers. Pero dito po sa atin, marami po ang natuto sa ibang bansa at dahil sa Build, Build, Build Program ng ating, uh, bansa sa ngayon, ako po ay naniniwala na karamihan ay babalik at hindi po sila natutuwa. Ako po ay saksi, hindi po sila natutuwa na sila'y nagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa. Wala po akong nakita na interview na natutuwa na sila ay malayo sa pamilya. Ang gusto po nila'y makabalik dito. Kung sila man po ay nakapagtrabaho sampung taon, labing limang taon, sinisigurado ko po na sila ay babalik dito. Malamang, hindi po nila magamit 'yung kanilang mga skills pero dapat nga po meron tayong departamento na naghahanda sa pagdating nila dahil 'yung kanila pong kaalaman ay malaking kayamanan. Pwede po silang maging negosyante, pwede po silang maging farmers, and thus they will also contribute in a sense. So hindi po polisiya natin ang palisin ang ating mga kababayan. Kaya nga po nating ginagawa, ang departamentong ito ay upang masiguro na long-term effects at long-term, uh, strategy para po doon sa ating mga kababayan, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, maraming salamat po, Mrs. Sponsor. Uh, Mr. Speaker, doon sa paglilinaw na, uh, totoo po na hindi talaga dapat long-term program ang overseas employment. Sapagkat tulad na nabanggit, uh, tungkulin ng mga pamahalaan ng iba't ibang bansa na sa halip na, sa pilitan na, o forced migration ang nagaganap, tama po 'yung observasyon niyo at tulad na nabanggit niyo doon sa inyong, uh, pagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa, ang mga kapwa Filipino natin na nagtatrabaho rito ay mas naais na makabalik sa kanilang mga bansa, nakakasama ang kanilang mga pamilya, kasama ang kanilang mga kaibigan, kulturang sila'y sanay na at kahit paano ay may mga mekanismo kapag may sulirenin o problema, ay meron silang malalapitan, mababalikan, at iba pa. Uh, ito nga po 'yung nabanggit, no, na, uh, totoo naman 'yung sinasabing, uh, meron tayong mga Filipino na meron naman talagang opportunity or choice na magtrabaho sa ibang bansa. Totoo 'yan, at sa totoo lamang po. Uh, dito nga 'yung aking mga kapatid, sila po ngayon ay nasa nagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa. Nagretiro na nga po sila ngayon, pero alam ko na sa kanilang puso at kaibuturan ang kanilang puso, kung merong oportunidad dito sa bansa, kung ang klimang, pagekonomiya, pangpolitika, pangkultura ay angkop para sa kanilang pangangailangan, nasa pinakaibuturan ng kanilang puso ang manatili sa ating bansa. Ngunit, ang nangyayari po ngayon, tulad na nabanggit, maraming ang nagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa dahil napipilitan, forced migration. Dahil nga po sa nabanggit, walang supisienteng oportunidad ng trabaho sa ating bansa. At kung meron man, ito ay nagbibigay ng mababang pasahod o hindi kaya naman ay trabahong hindi regular o 'yung tinatawag nga nating kontraktwal na trabaho. Tulad po nitong mga nabanggit, sigurado po recently, nabalitaan niyo po, nabatid niyo po, 'yung nangyari kay Joanna Demapilis na nung 2018, nagtatrabaho sa Kuwait ay pinaslang ng kanyang, uh, amo. Mas recently, si Janelle Viliabende, isa rin OFW na may hangarin rin at panaginip na makakapagtrabaho sa ibang bansa para maaring makapagkaroon ng bagong pagsasanay, makakita ng, kumita ng mas magandang pasahod. Ngunit, ang nakakalungkot, bumalik na nasa kabaong. Ito ang ilan lamang sinasina-sinasapit ng marami nating mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat. 'Yung ating mga domestic helpers na sa buong daigdig ay na makikita ang ating mga ibang mga manggagawa ngayon na nakikipagsapalaran sa mga kondisyon at kalagayan na bago sa kanila, hindi angkop sa kanilang mga kultura, nawawalay sa pamilya, lumilikan ng mga sulirenin sosyal dahil sa pagkawalay ng, uh, kadalasan ay mag-asawa. At bagamat totoo at hindi natin kinakila ito, sila ay nakakatulong sa ekonomiya, bunga ng kanilang niririmitang, uh, dolyares, real, at iba pang mga, uh, kinikita sa pagtatrabaho ng ating mga manggagawa. Hindi kila ang napakalaking kontribisyon ng ating manggagawang Filipino sa ating unemuya. Ngunit, ang kapalit ay mga Janelle Viliabende. Ang mga kapalit ay mga Joanna Demapilis. At hindi ko na masasabi, ang napakarami pang iba na mga sulirenin na nung ako'y nagtatrabaho sa OWA, hindi po po pala ako, pagkaklaro, hindi po ako nagtrabaho bilang OFW, kundi ako po'y nagtrabaho sa ahensya ng gobyerno na tungkulin ay magbigay ng, uh, tulong sa kagalingan at welfare ng ating mga OFWs, ay dumaranas ng gaditong mga sulirenin dahil sila ay sapilitang nagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa. Bunga ng kawalan ang oportunidad sa ating bansa. Ngayon, 'yung departamento ay itatayo natin. At pag sa pagkaunawa ko, may mga opisina dito sa naturang ahensya na ipagpapatuloy pa rin essentially ang promotion ng overseas employment. Medyo nagugulo ang kinatawang ito. Kasi bakit pa natin again ipo-promote ang overseas employment? Eh, nung March 2017, si Pangulong Duterte, si Pangulong Duterte na mismo nagsabi, he vowed in 2017 that in the next ten years, no Filipino will ever have to be forced to work abroad as it will just become an option. An option and no longer a necessity. Kung ngayon, magtatayo tayo ng departamento, tapos after ten years, wala na pa lang kliente ang departamentong ito. Kasi wala na magtatrabaho or at least mababawasan ang bilang ng mga manggagawa na sa pilitang magtatrabaho sa ibang bansa. Ano ngayon ang rasional? Bakit parang merong disconnect? That you are now establishing a department on one hand, but you're saying on the other hand, mawawala, mabawala o mababawasan na ang bilang ng kliente ng naturang departamento? San po 'yung, uh, koneksyon, uh, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, sa ganitong? Mr. Sponsor sa ganitong dalwang para magkasulungat na patakaran?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, unang-unang meron po tayong provision doon sa bill na after 10 years ay ire-review po natin ang ah, ang ah, kahalagahan o ah, ang need doon sa departamentong ito. So we will find out in, in the next 10 years but it is easier said than done. Alam ko po na gusto natin na lahat ng tao ay may trabaho dito pero hindi po 'yan ang realidad. Ang realidad po ay napakarami pa rin tao ang gustong pumunta sa ibang bansa although I think na siguro pag na-create itong ah, departamento neto, ito ay masususunod 'yung ibang trabaho na kailangan lamang ng matching, job matching lamang po 'yung kinakailangan dahil 'yung iba po nating mga kababayan ay nasa abroad hindi po nila alam kung paano lilipat dito sa ating bansa dahil ah, alam ko po mismo sa aming ah, sa Batanga City napakadami pong industries na naghanap na mga engineers, mga skilled workers pero hindi po ngayon sila makakita dahil nasa abroad nga po 'yung ating mga ah, skilled workers. So I, I think the creation of this department will really help ah, match the jobs and also 'yung sinasabi niyo pong ah, namatay ah, itong si Janelle ah, Villia ah, Bende ay ah, 'yan po ay kasama doon sa mga high risks ah, ah, jobs katulad ng mga household help. Ang sa akin nga po ay huwag na tayong magpadala ng household help. Sila po ay very vulnerable. Bakit hindi po natin i-train sila na ma-upgrade 'yung kanilang mga skills? Siguro sa pamamagitan din ng departamentong ito hindi na sila magiging household help bagkos sila po ay magiging ah, sa mga service-oriented na trabaho. Marami rin namang po akong na-interview na OFW na may success stories din namang po. Sila po ay natutuwa, sila po ay masaya sa kanilang trabaho at sila po ay every, ay every year, every two years bumabalik dito sa ating bansa at marami din pong success stories na naririnig. Kaya lamang ay syempre na-hihielight 'yung mga namamatay at ah, ah, 'yan po ay ah, nalulungkot po tayo pero ito nga pong ginagawa nating departamento ay hindi para sila ay mas lalong ah, masaktan o mapinsala sa abroad kundi ito nga po ay tulong. Gine-kinicreate po natin itong departamento neto, meron pong mga undersecretaries natututok sa kanilang pangangailangan legal at ah, in fact 'yun nga pong kaso ni ah, ah, Janelle ay ah, meron pang hinayr na ah, dekalidad na abugado doon sa Kuwait upang ipagtanggol at upang ah, makasuhan 'yung mga ah, kanilang mga employer. So ang, ang departamentong ito ay, ay para makatulong. Hindi po ito ah, para ipromote, na paalisin o ah, ipadala sa ibang bansa ang ating mga kababayan. Ang realidad po ay ah, sila po ay ah, nandoon dahil siguro hindi lang po natin, hindi lang po nila nalalaman 'yung mga available na jobs na kinakailangan dito. 'Yan po ako ay saksi. Doon po sa amin sa Batanga City napakadami pong naghanap na ah, ng employment, ng employer naghanap na mga tao upang magtrabaho sa kanilang mga LNG power plants, sa kanilang ah, oil depot, mga industries po 'yung sa amin, sa power industry. Ito po ay mga sa construction pa lang napakadami pong pangangailangan. Kaya tingin ko po meron talagang dapat na departamento na kasama 'yung trabaho na minamatch 'yung mga ah, workers para hindi na rin po sila umalis, Mr. Speaker.
Marami salamat po sa ating ah, kapitag-pitagang ah, kinatawan wala sa Batangas na ngayon sinasalantanga ng ah, bulkang ah, taal. Pero mabalik tayo po doon sa nabanggit niyo pong meron tinatawag kayong sunset review provision. Tama po ba 'yan na kagalang-galang na sponsor, Mr. Speaker? Na merong provision na pagkalipas ng sampung taon, ire-review ang naturang batas para alamin kung ano, kung dapat bang ipagpatuloy ang departamento, buwagin ang departamento, i-reorganize ang departamento at iba pa. Tama po ba 'yan ah, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Tama po, ah, Mr. Speaker, section 25.
Salamat po. Dito naman po ulit ako medyo na hindi ko masyado ma-appreciate kung bakit after a short span of 10 years, after, as I understand, 'yung mga ahensya na nabanggit ko kaninang existing na tulad ng OWA, POAA, CFO, agencies under the Department of Foreign Affairs and the Department of Labor ipagsasanib mo sa isang ahensya, after which, after 10 years, nako, mali ata itong naitayo natin, lumiliit na 'yung bilang ng mga OFWs. Ah, magreorganize tayo ulit. Hindi ho ba 'yung 10 years na binabanggit natin ay parang ah, kumbaga kung sa ah, direksyon ng deployment ng mga OFWs nagpick na, ngayon pababa na, ngayon magtatayo tayo suposided ang departamento para ngayon magkaroon ng isang focused na departamento na magkaasikaso ng kanilang pangangailangan. Ah, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor, 'yung 10 years ba, 'yun ba 'yung direksyon eventually na after ah, ma-review kung meron pa bang rasional sa panatilin depart- departamento ay maaring pagkatapos na naman ito, magkaroon na naman ng pagbabago, hindi kaya ay pagbubuwag na naturang ahensya dahil hindi na pala kailangan. Tama po ba 'yung aking appreciation na, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Well, lahat naman po ng bagay ay merong ah, pagbabago, ah, Mr. Speaker. Kaya nga po tayo ay naririto, binabalangkas po natin, minsan binabago po natin 'yung mga batas so hindi po natin alam kung after 10 years ay ganun na nga, baka hindi na nga po natin kailangan ng isang departamento dahil ah, may sapat na trabaho ang mga kapwa nating Pilipino dito sa ating bansa ay mas nakakatuwa po 'yun. At ah, ah, hindi naman po 'yan, hindi po natin masasabi kung after 10 years ay kailangan, baka mas lalo pang kailangan. Ang sinasabi lang po natin, nilagay lang po natin ito dito sa, sa ah, bill na ito ay pwede naman po nating gawing mas mataas o mas mababa but ang, ang ah, ginagawa po natin ito ay para sa kasalukuyang ah, sitwasyon. Ah, in five years it, somebody can propose na buwagin na natin ito eh, depende po sa mga mambabatas, sa mga susunod na, na, na congresses eh, 'yun po ay karapatan din ng mga mambabatas. Kahit po ilagay natin itong 20 years, 10 years pero kung meron pong gustong magbago ah, na ah, sa kongreso ito po ay mababago. Ang sinasabi lang po ay etuhuang sa ngayon na proposal at ito po 'yung ah, pangangailangan ng sitwasyon, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat po, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. Ah, sa ating kagalang-galang na sponsor, aware po ba kayo ngayon doon sa statistika hingil sa deployment ah, abroad ah, for the past, I think, one or two years, ah, may ah, observation ba kayo? Kasi nabanggit niyo na baka within five years' time or even shorter ay bumaba na ang bilang ng mga OFWs at mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat. Ah, meron ba tayong ah, datos para malaman kung ano na ba ngayon ang current trend ng overseas employment especially, especially in the light of what just recently happened in ah, the Iran US conflict where ah, because of the assassination of one leader of Iran, nagkaroon na naman ng heightening of tensions ah, in the Middle East. At ngayon, pinag-uusapan nga a few weeks ago at dapat may, may pag-uusap nga sa komite ah, hingil dito sa kongreso ay paano gagawin doon sa ating mga, hindi po 10,000, hindi po 50,000, hindi 100,000, kundi milyong mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat specifically dito sa Middle East. Ito ay maaring lumala sapagkad hindi pa natin alam ang ah, end story ng nag-anap recently. Gayun din 'yung mga policies tulad ng Saudi, Saudization na kung saan ang Kingdom of Saudi Arabia bilang isang programa nila para mabigyan ng trabaho ang kanilang kapwa mga mamamayan ay binabago ang orientasyon na sa halip na maghire ng mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat tulad ng mga Pilipino, mga Indonesians, mga Pakistani at iba pa ay kapwa mga nationals na ng Kingdom of Saudi Arabia ang pinapapasok sa kanilang mga ibat-ibang trabaho sa kanilang mga pagawaan. Ah, meron po ba kayong handang statistika ngayon hingil sa ano ba 'yung trends ngayon? Lalo na in the light of these developing situations where Filipinos, every time inangyari na lang sa ibang bansa, sigurado may mga Pilipino. Kung kayat ah, ano ang ah, tansya ngayon ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor, ano ba 'yung current trends regarding overseas employment ah, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, meron po akong ah, datos dito. Ah, siguro umpisahan ko po nun ah, 2012 ang ah, deployed na overseas Filipino workers po ay 1,802, ah, and 31. Nun 2013, 1,836, 345. Tapos bahagiya pong bumaba nun 2014, 1,832. Tapos nun 2015, tumaas po ng kaunti ah, 1,844. Nun 2016, tumaas din po, naging 2,112. At nun 2017 po ay bumaba, naging 1,992. So iba-iba po 'yung mga ah, sitwasyon. Tama po kayo, dapat nga po ay pinag-aaralan mabuti 'yung mga ah, sitwasyon sa bawat ah, ah, areas ng ah, kung saan marami tayong OFWs, lalong-lalo na dito sa, sa Middle East na merong ah, nagaganap na tension. So sigurado po 'yan ay ah, merong total deployment ban. So sigurado po ay bababa ang ah, ang numero ng ah, ipapadala ng mga OFW. Pero 'yan po ay ah, kasama dapat 'yan sa pinag-aaralan ng ah, departamento. Dapat po ay ah, ah, inform agad at in advance kung ano dapat, ah, kung ano mga nangyayari sa ah, for example in America, in Middle East, in, in Asia para po malaman natin kung saan ah, mas safe 'yung ating mga ah, Filipino workers. Usually namang po 'yan kapag ah, for example nun bumagsak po ang ah, oil and gas ay ah, nawalan po ng maraming trabaho 'yung ating mga kababayan. Pero lumilipat lamang po sila sa, sa ibang lugar dahil nga po meron na silang ah, set skills na sila'y hinahanap din nun mga ah, recruitment ah, agencies. Pero siguro ito na 'yung pagkakataon na pag napabalik po natin 'yung ah, ibang Pilipino o hindi napayagan na umalis ay ah, mas ma-i-match po natin sila sa mga trabaho na pwede man pala sila dito sa ating bansa. Kaya nga po mas lalong kailangan ang ah, departamentong ito. Kung, kung sinasabi po natin nasapat 'yung mga ahensya ngayon eh bakit hindi po natin mai-match o hindi po natin nagagawa ng paraan? Kaya nga po mas kailangan lalo ang departamento neto upang sa gayun matutukan natin ang ah, mas maayos pa na kung paano pababalikin at kung paano sila ah, pipigilan. Unang-unang doon na lamang po sa, siguro sa treaty with ah, another country, for example Kuwait, dapat po ay napaka, napakahigpit ng ating mga agreement sa mga bansa na 'yan dahil ah, pag may violation may mga ah, consequences po. Alam ko na hinigpitan na natin 'yung ating treaty with Kuwait pero ganun pa man meron din nangyari, namatay kaya nga po nangyari 'yung ah, total ah, deployment ban. Pero ganun pa man ah, ako po ay naniniwala na itong departamento neto ay mas higit na makakatulong sa ating mga overseas Filipino workers, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, maraming salamat po sa kasagutan, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. Um, gusto lang ipabatid sa ating kagalang-galang na, Mr. Sponsor, na ito mga ahensyang nabanggit, POAA, OWA, kung saan ako nanggaling dati, at iba pa. Naniniwala ko meron na mga ilang mga programa doon sa binabanggit niyo especially 'yung tinatawag niyo pong ah, ah, return program, meaning doon sa pagbabalik ng ating mga Pilipino sa ibayong dagat para sila po ay ma-integrate ulit sa ating ekonomiya. Sila ay mabibigyan ng pagkakataon ah, either maglag- magtayo ng sariling negosyo, makapagtrabaho, magkaroon ng investments, maging entrepreneur sa ating bansa. Meron ng existing na programs ang mga ahensya sa matter of fact sa Department of Labor na bahagi rin ang OWA ay itinalaga na 'yung programa na 'yan, ang reintegration program. Ngunit alam naman natin na sa totoo lamang 'yung binabanggit na ah, tagal ng programa ng overseas employment sa totoo lamang hindi na po ito stopgap measure. Noong 1970s 'yan na po 'yung sinasabi pero hanggang ngayon tuloy-tuloy pa rin ang overseas employment. Bagamat totoo na bumababa pero ang danger po nito ay bunga na nga rin ng ah, mga kalagayan sa buong daigdig na dahil rin sa krisis ng ekonomiya nila ay lumiliit na rin ang bilang na maari nilang iempleo. Gayun din sa ating mga seafarers na marami sa kanila ang ah, hindi na rin ma-deploy abroad, bunga na nga rin doon sa tumataas na mga ah, pamantayan sa kanilang pagtatrabaho in terms of educational attainment, trainings, ratings and the like, hindi na magqualify 'yung ating mga seafarers. At nakakabahala dahil sa nakita kong datos, halos ah, malak- ah, very significant 'yung figure ng pagbagsak ng bilang ng ating mga manggagawa lalo na 'yung mga seafarers. Na sa totoo lamang may panahon po sa kaseyesaya ng Pilipinas na ang mga seafarers gali sa Pilipinas nag-comprise a substantial figure of ah, overseas workers ah, na nasa mga shipping industries at iba pa. Pero doon sa nabanggit na buong programa ng gobyerno ang dahil nga sa kakulangan ng tuna-totoong industrialisasyon na binabanggit niyo magkaroon ng sariling trabaho sa ating bansa dahil sa kawalan ito ay hindi pa rin sapat ang empleo. Kung merong empleo ngang natitira hindi ito mga regular na trabaho at kung merong mga trabaho hindi nagbibigay na nakabubuhay na sahod. At tama 'yung observasyon niyo, walang gustong mga manggagawa na tumagal sa mawalay sa kanilang mga pamilya. At sabi niyo, marami kayo na kausap, nalulungkot, nalulungkot dahil nawawalay sila. Maaring 'yung iba gustong pumunta sa ibang bansa para maging turista, para mag-enjoy ng sights pero hindi magtrabaho ng napakatagal at mawalay sa pamilya na nagdudulot na mga maraming sulirenin sosyal at iba pa. Ah, panghuli po, ah, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor, ah, ito po 'yung isang concern rin. Ako po ay naging pangulo rin ng organisasyon ng mga kawaney sa pamahalaan 'yung Courage at ang isang laging pinangamba ng mga kawaney every time na magkakaroon ng pagtatayo ng departamento na parang napakagandang pakinggan, sa kabilang bahagi sinasabi rin na bubwagin o i-absorb 'yung ibang ahensya ng pamahalaan dito sa ahensyang ito. Nandiyan 'yung POAA, nandiyan 'yung CFO, bagamat doon sa huling version na nabasa ko, ang OWA ay ituturing attach agency pa rin ng ah, naturang departamento, bunga na nga rin ang kalagayan na ang OWA ay hindi pondo ng gobyerno, kung hindi pondo ng mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat, bunga ng kanilang kontribusyon. Ito po ay isang trust fund. Ngunit dito sa reorganisasyon na'to, dito sa pagtatayo ng bagong departamento, may proteksyon mo ba ang mga manggagawa na maapektuhan na naman ng naturang reorganisasyon? Doon sa pagtatayo ng departamento but at the same time 'yung pagbubuwag ng mga kukulang mga opisina na sinasabing i-integrate sa bagong departamento, Mr. Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, 'yung tama po kayo ah, 'yung pong mga departamentong nabanggit ay i-absorb at 'yung OWA po ay ah, isang attach agency dahil na rin sa ito ay isang pribadong ah, ah, pondo na... na ah galing sa mga OFW. Pero ang ah ang maganda po rito ay ang magiging chairman ng ah ng ah pagkangasiwa ng pondo ay ah ang secretary. So ah lahat namang po ng mga maa-absorb na ahensya ay merong tinatawag na ah, siyempre may security of tenure, may ayon sa civil service. Susundin namang po 'yung lahat ng mga batas na sa gayun sila ay mailipat ng maayos doon sa bagong ah ahensya, Mr. Speaker.
Um maraming salamat po sa paglilinaw, ah Mrs. Sponsor. Ngunit doon sa nabasa kong mga dokumento, um may provision pa rin talaga na those employees affected by the reorganization of the organization of the department, the new department, may mga provision doon sa usapin ng kanilang separation, sa kanilang pagkatanggal sa trabaho marami sa kanila. Ay mga kasama ko pa rin sa OWA, sa POA, pero after serving those agencies for several years, malalagay na naman sila sa panganib dahil wala ho ang assurance na mananatili pa rin sila sa trabaho, lalo na doon sa naispang manatili sa pagseserbisyo. Naglalagay doon ang provision, nabibigyan daw ng kukuolang mga benepisyo. Pero kung ang benepisyo hindi naman nila hinahabol, kung hindi ang employment ang habol nila, sila ay sapilitang mata-sapilitang matatanggal. Bagamat may benefit sila in terms of separation. In any reorganization as we've observed, 'yung tanggalan ay talagang laging nagaganap, no? At ah 'yan 'yung laging concern ng kinatawang ito, lalo na sa karapat-karapatan at kagalingan ng ating mga manggagawa. Ah, Mr. Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker, bilang pagtatapos, naniniwala po ako na ang pagtatayo ng departamento ay hindi pangunahing magiging solusyon sa ating mabigat na sulirenin ng ating mga OFWs. Nakakalungkot 'yung sinapit nila Joanna, nila Jenny Lynn. At libo-libo pang mga manggagawa na dumanas ng ganitong karahasan mula sa kanila mga employer. Marami pa ang masasabing dumaranas pa rin ang matinding kahirapan. At marami akong kaibigan at kamag-anak na pare-pareho ang kanilang ah binabanggit na mga sulirenin ang kukuolang atensyon ng gobyerno sa kanilang kalagayan. Kung kaya't ah sa halip na sapilitang employment o overseas or labor export program ang itulak, tama po at naniniwala akong sumasangayon rin ng ating ah sponsor na dapat ang overseas employment program ay dapat matigil o di kayo mabawasan na. At sa halip, 'yung option, 'yung mga nagnanais na lamang, hindi sapilitang magtrabaho sa ibayong dagat, ang bigyan na lang ng ganitong kukuolang ah oportunidad. Ah nakakapangamba rin na kahit sa pagtatayo ng mga bagong departamento, ah mismo ang gobyerno sa halip na tulungan sila ay naglalag-nagpapataw pa ng napakaraming state exactions. Ibig sabihin, ah akala natin ay andakina ng kanilang kontribusyon sa ekonomiya, pero sa bawat hakbang ng manggagawa na magtrabaho sa ibayong dagat, 'yung gobyerno ay narayan para singilin siya sa kanyang pasaporte, magbayad ng kanyang fees sa OWA, sa POA. Ngayon, pati ang field health ay dinagdagan pa ang ang pabigat sa ating mga OFWs. Kung kaya't ah 'yung tinaguri ang ah bagong mga bayani, hindi 'yan ang dapat natin isukli sa ating mga ah tunay na nagpapakahirap, nagda-naglalagay sa kanila sa panganib, sa pagtatrabaho sa ibayong dagat. Pangunahin sana, ang pinakaboto ngaysan ay hanapan ng paraan para silang mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat ay manatili na sa ating bansa. Mabigyan ng oportunidad na magtrabaho, nagbibigay ng kabuang kontribusyon sa ekonomiya ng Pilipinas para sa kabubuti, hindi lamang nila, kundi ng ng buong sambayanan. Gayun din sana na sa hangarin ng ah ng kinatawang ito, na protektahan natin ang hindi lamang ang ating mga OFWs, ang mga manggagawa sa ibayong dagat, ang iba't ibang mga Pilipino na humaharap ng manapakaraming sulirenin sa ibang bansa. Kundi gayun din, 'yung mga manggagawa ang nagtatrabaho sa mga naturang ahensya na kapag ito'y itinatag, ay magkakaroon rin ng ah epekto sa kanilang trabaho at kabuhayan. Maraming salamat po, Mrs. Sponsor, maraming salamat po, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the next member who wishes to interpolate our distinguished sponsor is our minority leader, the gentleman from the sixth district of Manila, Representative Benvenido Abante Jr. I move that the gentleman be recognized.
Minority floor leader Benvenido Abante is recognized.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the sponsor of this bill, Mr. Speaker, allow me to be able to ask some um leading questions on the said bill, Mr. Speaker?
It would be an honor, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, I've been traveling ah in many countries for the past twenty-five more years and most of those countries, Mr. Speaker, would be the Middle East countries like Kuwait and UAE, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, Bahrain. And therefore, I would have firsthand knowledge of the problems that are besetting our OFWs. In fact, Mr. Speaker, I am in favor of a total ah ban on the domestic helpers being employed, not only in Kuwait, but all over the Middle East because of the many, many problems that our domestic helpers have been encountering. Ever since the thirteenth Congress, of which I became member of, I've already called on the government to have a total employment ban on those countries. Anyway, the first question, Mr. Speaker, your honor, would be, you know, under section four of House Bill 5832, the DFO shall be the primary agency under the executive branch tasked to protect the rights and promote the welfare of Filipinos overseas. Under section three, letter D, FOs are referred to as Filipino nationals outside the Philippines, whether permanent or temporary, including OFWs and their dependents abroad, tourists, pilgrims, students, trainees, religious missionaries, among others, Mr. Speaker, Sponsor, is that right?
That's correct, ah, Mr. Speaker.
On the other hand, Republic Act number seventy-one fifty-seven, which is known as the Philippine Foreign Service Act of nineteen ninety-one, gives the DFA mandate to implement Philippine foreign policy, which includes, and I quote, "protection of the rights and promotion of the welfare and interest of Filipino overseas," end of quote. Can you please enlighten this representation as to House Bill 5832 delineating the services provided by the Department of Filipino Overseas Act from the DFA mandate under Republic Act number seventy-one fifty-seven, considering that DFO, definition of FOs, is specific, but almost all encompassing similar to the mandate of the DFA, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, minority leader, the ah the bill also um has a one-country team approach, meaning ah the head, which is the ambassador or the consul, consul general, will be the ah will recommend to the DFO secretary in coordination with the Department of Foreign Affairs to ah to let them, to let the secretary know of such the interest of our Filipino ah workers. So it is still the ah DFA through the ambassador or the consul general would be the one who would recommend to the department secretary of this department in case it is ah created.
Precisely, Mr. Speaker, that would be my second question. But ah the 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 other question would be, where does the services of the DFO ends and the services of the DFA begins? Now this representation is asking because there may be overlapping services and there would not be, there would not be clear mandate on who will actually lead, who will be the lead agency, Mr. Speaker, if we are not going to correct the seeming overlapping provisions of the act that we are talking now and the law concerning the Department of Foreign Affairs, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Mr. Speaker, the ah the secretary of this department would be the one in charge of all and everything ah in relation to ah um ah employment policies. But ah the DFA, of course, is the one ah having a relationship with the foreign ah country would be the ah ah recommend, will recommend ah some of those policies as to how the ah department would, for example, ah in terms of agreements with the different countries. Then, of course, the ambassador or the DFA officials or the secretary of the Department of Foreign Affairs will still be ah talking to this secretary in case this department is created. Ah I know there are some ah always overlapping ah jobs as far as the DFA, as to it is the present situation also. Ah sometimes the Department of Labor or the secretary of Department Labor will, they have to coordinate with the Department of Foreign Affairs as to how to approach certain issues because of national security issues. So, of course, the this secretary will have to ah coordinate with the Department of Foreign Affairs as far as ah national security issues are concerned. For example, ah the total ban on ah workers to Kuwait, that that entails the ah the observation of a Department of Foreign Affairs. So ah maybe there is a suggestion from the minority leader to to clarify the laws as far as this ah bill is concerned. But as far as I know, um the Department of Foreign Affairs has a say as to the ah um relationship with any foreign um um, let's say, foreign um um employer. And ah like I said, there is a a one ah one, one country team approach, which is the ambassador will be the lead negotiator, as we say, or the consul general would be the one giving the policies or recommendations to this ah secretary of department. Obviously, the the secretary of this department would not ah go beyond the ah Department of Foreign Affairs as far as those relationships are are concerned. It is always a consultation, it is always a recommendation whether to proceed with the agreements or whether there is a conflict or whether there is a question of law. So ah I I I think if there is a suggestion from the good minority leader, I I would be happy to to amend any of the provisions of this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, your honor. So I'm sure that you would be in favor of further amending ah the House Bill number five-eight-three-two, Mr. Speaker, your honor? All right, now, ah considering your point, ah my second question would be, on section fourteen of House Bill five-eight-three-two, to me, further saw confusion on the mandate of the DFO and DFA as while House Bill five-eight-three-two provides a one-country team approach, as you have been explaining, designating the ambassador or the consul general as the leader of the mission. In the second sentence, the ambassador is relegated to a recommendatory position to the DFA secretary without any input or mention of the DFO. So, Mr. Speaker, your honor, can you please enlighten this representation on the seeming absence of the DFO secretary in matters that will be clearly within its jurisdiction and mandate as protector of Filipinos overseas? Because if we are not going to correct this, Mr. Speaker, your honor, ah when there are such overlapping provisions, instead of consultation, instead of connecting well with the two departments, there might arise some confusion and there might arise even ah some not only overlapping functions, but also owning and disowning such responsibility, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor?
Well, I see in on section fourteen, ah, Mr. Speaker, um it it says in coordination with the secretary of DFA.
Yes.
So ah if there is another word, stronger word, maybe, ah consultation, coordination, so that's what I see on on section fourteen. But ah like I said, um if there are any suggestions from the minority leader, I'd be glad to amend this section when the time comes on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Now this representation would like to suggest therefore that a clear delineation and mandate for the DFO, drawing a line, you know, between the DFO mandate and services and the DFA mandate, considering section fourteen of House Bill five-eight-three-two. This will clearly saw this confusion, especially in times of crisis management for our Filipinos overseas if it is left unchecked, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. And I want to thank you so much for ah your um you favoring a certain amendments to the bill, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Thank you, Mr. Minority Leader, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, well, number three question would be this, no? With respect to the regulatory power, regulatory power of the DFO in terms of operations of private recruitment and mining agencies and related business, is this power quasi-judicial or merely administrative in character?
Well, there is a ah, there is an undersecretary for foreign employment as far as the ah the men, the the concerns of recruitment agencies, you mean, ah minority leader?
Does the DFO, let let me just ah make it clear, Mr. Speaker, your honor, does the DFO, our bill here today, have the power under section four, letter R of the bill, to adjudicate and mete out penalties, suspension, and including blacklisting and prosecutorial power and sabwina, sabwina? and sabwina, sabwina powers? Because, Mr. Speaker, your honor, kung ito lang po eh, regulatory power, at wala pong tinatawag nating quasi-judicial power, ano po ang magiging ngipin ng Department of OFWs? On this, Mr. Speaker.
As of right now, Mr. Speaker, the, it is only administrative powers that is given by this bill. But it was, I think it was deleted in the latest version before, as far as the quasi-judicial powers are concerned. I guess this would be administrative in nature and then any prosecution will be recommended as far as any criminal liabilities are concerned.
Yeah, I'm saying this, Mr. Speaker, because I would like to be clarified, Mr. Speaker, because this is one of the delicate and dangerous issues hounding our OFWs. They don't have a department or an executive branch that will readily provide remedy for such unscrupulous recruitment and mining agencies. In reality, Mr. Speaker, this is, this has been going on for many years. Marami na pong nangyari dito na mga tinatawag nating mga unscrupulous recruitment, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Kaya gusto ko lang iclarify po ito because nais na po nating tanggalin 'yung mga, 'yung mga housey o na recruitment na eh, tine-adventise po lamang ang ating mga OFWs, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor.
My apologies, Minority Leader. The, the section, I think the section you are mentioning is, was already deleted in the latest version. So it is not, it is not included in the new version, Mr. Minority.
Not included?
That's correct.
Okay, the fourth question would be this. In Section 4, Letter Z of the bill, transferred all the functions assigned to the Dole relative to OFWs as provided under the Migrant Workers Act of 1995 and OWA functions under Republic Act Number 10801. Under Section 19, DFO shall exercise administrative supervision over the OWA as an attached agency for purposes of policy and program, coordination, monitoring, and evaluation, and given two years to exist for purposes of evaluation. Is that true, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
That's correct, Mr. Speaker.
Republic Act, Section 2, Republic Act Number 10801 provides that OWA shall be one of the principal agencies of the state to serve and promote the rights, interests, and welfare of the OFWs and their families. Following our question on DFA delineation, where does the services of DFO ends? And the OWA services begin?
Well, the OWA services covers the OFWs who have contributed their membership fees. So the benefits would be given to those who are members or who are contributors of the fund, Mr. Speaker. But that's besides the other benefits that the department can provide for those who are not members of the OWA fund.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, you know, OWA is a very rich agency because of the, the contributions of the OFW. In fact, right now, I think they have about 20 billion, 20 billion. And whenever we have that kind of money, which is not being used as it should be used, it is always prone to corruption, Mr. Speaker, your honor. And one of the very reasons why I would support this bill is because we would like to stop the corruption that is going on in OWA right now as far as distributing these contributions of the OFWs concerned, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
I agree with the minority leader, Mr. Speaker. In fact, it is on the bill itself, it says two years after the effectivity of this act, the department shall conduct a review of the administration operations and functions of OWA as an attached agency. So I guess that is another bill, Mr. Speaker, in terms of maybe understanding the benefits given by OWA, that is another separate issue as far as this bill is concerned. But it is included in this bill that there will be a department review of operations and functions. So in a later time, Mr. Speaker, we can find out how many beneficiaries does the OWA fund give out as far as the years that have passed and how much are there, how much funds do they have as of right now? The minority leader is correct. It is around 19.7 billion as of October 2019, Mr. Speaker.
Is Section 19, Mr. Speaker, your honor, amending Republic Act Number 10801?
Not necessarily, Mr. Speaker. It is just a provision that it will, it shall conduct a review.
Because if that would be the case, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I think it is better to abolish OWA. Let me repeat, Mr. Speaker, it is better to abolish OWA in favor of the Department of Filipinos Overseas Act, Mr. Speaker, what do you think of that?
Mr. Speaker, that was a heated debate during the committee hearing, whether the OWA would be an attached agency or should be subsumed by this department. But the fact is, it is, it manages private funds, Mr. Speaker. So as to protect the funds, we did not include it as, we did not attach, we did not, we provided that it will be attached instead of subsumed by this department because we cannot mix the private funds with the public funds as of right now. I just wanted to pass this creation because it's a governmental organization and I didn't want to, we didn't want to include the issue as far as the mixing of the private funds and the public funds. So as of right now, Mr. Speaker, the trustees will be the same trustees managing the fund, but the department secretary would be the chairman of the OWA fund if, in case this bill is created. So basically, the department has supervision, administrative supervision over the OWA administrator and also he is a chairman of the trust fund. In a later time, like I said, it would be another bill, maybe, or after two years, this bill shall be reviewed or OWA function should be reviewed as whether to, what to do with the funds. As of right now, that is not part of the bill, Mr. Speaker.
Of course, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, when this bill was still being tackled, I think at the 17th Congress, no? I was not yet here in the House and how I wish that I was, I had been there to debate in the committee concerning this, Mr. Speaker. Now, you talk about the OWA handling private funds. The fact is this, yes, it is private funds because it is the contributions of OFWs. Yet, when a, an agency of the government is the one becoming the steward of such funds, it becomes, in a way, public funds. And therefore, it must be, you know, given a real disciplined stewardship of the funds, Mr. Speaker, your honor. And that's the very reason why, you know, as I've said, I am supporting this bill because we would like to really check on corruption, Mr. Speaker. Anyway, the fifth question I'd like to ask is this, you know, the declared policies of the House Bill 5832 requires inclusive decision-making and participative under Section 2, Letter H. In Section 2I, it recognizes NGOs, trade unions, and other entities as stakeholders to the welfare of OFWs. And yet, under Section 7, on appointment of DFO secretary, Section 8 on structure of the DFO, and Section 9 on qualifications, OFW opinion and suggestions and representation is not even mentioned, much less given any real participative decision. What can you say about this, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Mr. Speaker, the, the department created a secretary and also five under secretaries. And under the five, under the five under secretaries, they have assistant secretaries to assist the different sectors, OFW sectors. If I may look at Section 12, there is a sectoral and industry task forces. The department is empowered to create a sectoral and industry task forces, technical working groups, advisory bodies or committees for the furtherance of the objectives. So under Section 12, there are, there is a provision in which additional private sector representatives, such as from the OFWs, academe, private industries, as well as other national agencies, local government units, may be appointed to this sectoral and industry task force, task forces. This is under Section 12 of the bill. So it includes the other sectors, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I don't think that would be enough, enough to protect our Filipinos overseas if they do not have any real representation. The officials of the DFO, if ever this becomes a law, are not even required to consult with OFW representatives or other stakeholders. To me, Mr. Speaker, your honor, sana naman eh, kung sino po ang magiging secretary, under secretary, assistant secretary, Mr. Speaker, your honor, eh, sana 'yung iba naman ay talagang main nalalaman ang lahat ng problema ng OFW. At talaga namang sila ay nabibilang sa mga naging OFW. Sabagat napakarami naman, Mr. Speaker, na mga dating OFW na maaaring makatulong upang mas maging maganda ang departamentong ating pinag-uusapan ngayon. What do you think, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor?
Well, tama po rin ang ating minority leader. Dapat po ay may nalalaman 'yung ating mga official. Pero ako rin po ay naniniwala na being public servants, whether it is an undersecretary, assistant secretary, they will listen to the different sectors in which they represent. So sabi ko nga po, meron mga under secretaries na nakatutok mismo sa, sa mga, for example, 'yung ating pong undersecretary of foreign employment, under the secretary, meron pong assistant secretary heading each of the following unit. Meron po ditong licensing, employment welfare, government placement sector, land-based sector and sea-based and Fisher-Folk sector. So meron po naman itong nakaatas na mga assistant secretaries and under secretaries para po matutukan 'yung mga pangangailangan na mga iba't ibang sector. Ang ating pong, Section 9 ay undersecretary of, ah, sa qualifications po? Which, which section is it? Ah, under Section 9, meron po ditong provision sa ating bill na, if I may read, Mr. Speaker, no person shall be appointed secretary, undersecretary, or assistant secretary of the department unless he or she is a natural-born citizen, a resident of the Philippines, good moral character, proven integrity and competence in public administration and expertise preferably in migration governance affecting Filipinos overseas, particularly OFWs. No person involved in the business of recruitment of OFWs up to the fourth civil degree of consanguinity or affinity shall be appointed as secretary, undersecretary, or assistant secretary of the department. So meron pong ganitong provision, maybe because baka po magkaroon ng iba't ibang influensya, kanya-kanyang hatag na influensya. So inaavoidin po natin na magkaroon ng ganong klaseng problema ang ating departamento. Ito po ay kinikreate natin na patas sa lahat ng mga sector at hindi po para bigyan lamang ng pansin ang isang sector dahil 'yung secretary or assistant secretary ay nabibilang doon sa, whether if it's sea-based or land-based sector.
Naintindihan ko po, Mr. Speaker, your honor, sa akin lang po, kung pwede ko magsuggest, na dapat meron pong isang clear provision is provided, designating a representative from the private sector with that qualification you just mentioned, either as an undersecretary or assistant secretary, who will provide inputs from the private sector and OFWs, as well as serve as control for the DFO, provided that he will be able to pass all the requirements given by Section 9, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Like I said, Mr. Speaker, any amendments from the good minority leader would be welcome. Ito namang pong kinreate nating under secretaries ay hindi limited sa lima. Ibig pong sabihin, ay meron pong kapangyarihan ang eukutibo, lalo ang presidente, na magappoint ng karagdagang under secretaries upang sa gayon ay 'yung sinasabi po ng ating minority leader ay makasama. Kung hindi man ngayon, ay sa mga darating pang panahon. It doesn't limit, the bill does not limit the number of under secretaries, Mr. Speaker.
All right, dalawang tanong na lang po, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Thank you for laboring with me on the answers of this. Section 13 of the House Bill designates ATN Career Officers Corporation, ACO, as a pool similar to the Foreign Service Corps. We all know how hard it is to enter the FSO. What would this type of service provide for the DFO? Will the ACO be provided to all employees of the DFO? Now, this representation is asking because this DFO is a much-needed agency for purposes of providing services to Filipinos overseas. If they will undergo the same training as the FSO, while the DFO has been running, employees will not be readily while the DFO has been running, employees will not be readily available. What do you think of that, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor?
Uh, that's correct. Under Section 13, there is a, uh, ATN Career Corps, um, to be established. And, uh, under civil service rules and regulations, there is a training program, a merit promotion system, and, uh, a system for deployment and, and recall. So, um, I think this training is also necessary so that we have, uh, uh, qualified, um, officials as far as, uh, this department is concerned.
Alright. Well, last question, Mr. Speaker, your honors, please. In the, in the bill, there is no mention of the creation of a bank or financial institution and hospitals that will cater to OFW. Although under Section 5, letter M of the bill, the DFO shall provide social and welfare services to OFWs, including insurance and remitan services. Ngayon, pinag-usapan na po ito, I think it was the last, uh, 17 congress where a, a, a bank was proposed for the OFW and a hospital was even proposed in congress for the OFW. So, ang may tanong ko po rito, 'yung pong bangko ng OFW na dating postal bank, 'yung po ba'y mapapasa ilalim ng Central Bank? O ito po ay may kaugnayan din naman sa Department of OFW, uh, Mr. Speaker, your honor? Pati po 'yung hospital, ito ba'y magiging sa ilalim ng, uh, DOH? O meron din po itong kaugnayan o mapapasa ilalim po dito sa ating pinag-uusapang House Bill number 5832?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, wala po dun sa, uh, version na ito 'yung hospital, creation of the hospital dahil hindi po siya, uh... Kaya siguro nung secretary of, uh, uh, this department dahil ito po ay, uh, um, under ng Department of Health. So, hindi po ito mama-manage ng, uh, ng secretary of, uh, ng foreign, overseas and foreign employment. At, uh, baka po pag sinama ko 'yun dito, ay mag-iiba po ang, uh, ang bill na ito dahil iba na po sigurong proposal 'yun kung sakasakaling, uh, dumating sa panahon na kailangan 'yung hospital ng mga OFWs. Pero sa ngayon po, hindi po 'yun napasama dito sa bill. And, and I, I think the, uh, the bank also is not under this, uh, department or the, the secretary because, uh, banks are supervised and regulated by the, uh, Central Bank of the Philippines, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Traveling, uh, for many years in the Middle East, Mr. Speaker, and other places, and knowing the plight of our OFWs, I've been, I've been asking, uh, the OFW leaders if they really, if they really would like a department of the Filipinos overseas. And, uh, many of them, many of them agree. Many of them, uh, are in favor of, uh, creating a department. Ang kanila lamang pong nais sabihin, ang kanila lamang ng fear ay baka na naman ito ay maging, uh, uh, isang malaking walapakinabang departamento sa mga OFW, sa pagkat eh... Mapubunurin po ito ng mga official ng ating gobyerno napakatagal na sa iba't ibang ahensya na wala namang po talagang, uh, ginawa. Ano po? 'Yung po ang, 'yung po ang iake na mga OFW, no? Uh, ito pong bill na ito, House Bill number 5832. Uh, if approved, will perhaps create a department na, na kinakailangan po talaga. We have heard about OFW storage then and now. Some tragic, other consequential, and still others successful. And I, I hope na ito po talagang departamenting ito, kung maging patas po ito, ay talaga po naman na makakatulong to protect and serve the OFWs. 'Yung po ang nais po natin, no? Ayaw po natin na magcreate lam po tayo isang departamento na, uh... Hindi rin po nila magagawa, ang dapat nilang gawin na, na binigay na mandate po sa nila ng Kongreso. Oo. While we load our OFWs as our bagong bayani, you know, this representation feels that of course, it is not enough that we recognize them as they wa- as what they are. We have to protect, we have to help them. And what better way to do this? Is perhaps a department solely for that purpose, funded, efficient, ready to help at a moment's notice, and the officials, Mr. Speaker, your honor, would not be beholden to corruption. Oh... This presentation squirmed when the specter of a protracted war between the US and Iran hovered over the Middle East last January 3, 2020. When a US airstrike in Baghdad assassinated Qasim Soleimani, the chief of Iran's elite Islamic Revolutionary Guard Corps, overseas forces, the immediate thinking was a displacement of over 2.1 million Filipinos across the Middle East, including illegal workers. While the Philippine government did make the evacuation plan its number-one priority, if there was really a department that is directly dealing with them, perhaps our OFWs will be better served. Ang nais lamang natin, Mr. Speaker, your honor, kapag tayo po ay nagkaroon ng ganitong departamento, ay talaga namang po masi- mais- maisaayos po natin ang napakaraming problema ng ating OFW ngayon. 'Yun po ang panalangin ko, 'yun po ang wish ko, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Kaya't maraming, maraming salamat po sa mga inyong mga kasagutan. And hope and wish, Mr. Speaker, that if this, this, this House Bill number 5832 will become a law, that this will truly serve and protect and help all our OFWs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Monsieur Minority Leader. Uh, Mr. Speaker, for the ben- for the information also, the good minority leader, there is a Section 24, which is a congressional oversight, uh, committee. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill number 5832.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the visitors of Kong Representative, uh, Representative Ferdinand Gaite of Bayan Muna. They are from the United States, namely, Jun To Gade, Ofelia Fausto, and May Gaite.
To the visitors of Representative Ferdinand Gaite, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the same.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of bills and resolutions.
Additional reference of business, resolutions. House Resolution 643, directing the appropriate committee to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation into the recent Taal volcano eruption by Representative Barzaga.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 644, directing the Committee on Transportation to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation on the reported extension of pilot test- testing for motorcycle taxi and to provide guidelines affecting the same by Representative Bagatting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 645, congratulating the Metro Manila Development Authority on the successful staging of the 2019 Metro Manila Film Festival and for officially launching the acceptance of entries for the Metro Manila Summer Film Festival by Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Metro Manila Development.
House Resolution 646, directing the appropriate committee of the House to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the evident lack of security and safety measures being implemented in major commercial public establishments such as small shopping centers and other similar establishments by Representative Castillo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 647, directing the appropriate House committees to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the alleged lopsided concession agreement entered by the government with the Ayala Pangilinan Consortium Light Rail Management Corporation by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 648, commending act teachers, party list Representative Franz Castro for being awarded the 2019 Phoebe Elizabeth Velazquez Trade Union Rights Award by Representatives Sarati, Gaite, Coliamat Brozas, and Ilago.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Resolution 649, urging resolution, calling for an inquiry in aid of legislation on the decision of the Inter-Agency Technical Working Group to extend the pilot implementation of motorcycle taxis by Representative Lim.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 650, expressing profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Nestor B. Pong One, representative of the Lone Legislative District of the Province of Benguet in the 18th Congress by Representatives Kaitano Alan Peter, Romualdes Ferdinand, and Abante.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 651, expressing the compassion, solidarity, support, and empathy of the House of Representatives for the injured, displaced, and bereaved victims of Typhoon Ursula by Representatives Kaitano Alan Peter, Romualdes Ferdinand, and Abante.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up, uh, for adoption House Resolution number 650 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said resolution.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of that resolution.
House Resolution number 650, resolution expressing profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Nestor B. Pong One, representative of the Lone Legislative District of the Province of Benguet in the 18th Congress.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution number 650.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. House Resolution 650 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider for adoption House Resolution number 651 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Resolution number 651.
House Resolution number 651, resolution expressing the compassion, solidarity, support, and empathy of the House of Representatives for the injured, displaced, and bereaved victims of Typhoon Ursula.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution number 651.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. House Resolution number 651 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we reconsider the approval on second reading of House Bill number 2674 to introduce some perfecting amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Um, the approval of second reading of House Bill number 2674 is hereby reconsidered.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider, uh, on second reading, House Bill number 2674 that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 2674, an act establishing a district branch of the Land Transportation Office in the Municipal Labo in the First District of Camarines Norte and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. The period of amendments is hereby opened.
Mr. Speaker, I... There being no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, earlier we distributed to all members copies of the substitute bill to House Bill number 2674. Pursuant to Section 104 of our rules, I move to amend by substitution the entire bill as contained in Committee Report number 174 with the contents of the substitute bill earlier distributed to all the members. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The period of individual amendments is hereby opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to propose individual amendments, I now move that we close the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The period of individual amendments is hereby closed.
And now, Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
And, Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill number 2674 as amended.
Is there any objection? Those in favor of the bill say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 2674 is hereby approved on second reading as amended. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session.
Session suspended. Session resumed?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session until tomorrow, January 21, Tuesday, at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Session is suspended until tomorrow, January 21, at 3:00 PM.